Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the workshop for Swan County Board of County Commissioners for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. At this time, I'd like to get Mr. Fleming to lead the invocation and pledge. May I all stand, please?
Good morning, I'll probably come again, once again in your name, thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us, thank you for our last night's sleeping in the morning that it was rising and coming out to do county goodness, we pray you're blessed over here, bless these commissioners, ourselves, because our staff have mercy this morning, probably will let you able to make a way out of nowhere, that you guide us, that you give us strength, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, God bless us with the blessings we stand in here, all the activities and all blessings in Jesus' name is great now.
Amen.
I believe Jesus is seated at the flag of the United States of America and is through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all its resources and all.
I just, I just want to start the meeting by saying that we're here for just a workshop. This is all just information, mostly so everybody in the public and the board can all be on the same page. We're not here to make any decisions today, it's just mostly information purposes, I just want to make that clear in the beginning. We'll start off with a presentation by Ms. Jennifer Green, representing Liberty Partners. She has been with Mr. Tim Parsons and Mr. Adam Potts, so if you will, please, ma'am. Let me, let me say that Jennifer, I mean Jennifer's here is, she's here to present to us on grant writing, grant administration, and what she can help, help the county do, so if you will.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the invitation, as the chairman mentioned, we've got here Tim Parsons, who is our vice president of the firm, and then Adam Potts, who's our director of government affairs. While we are a lobbying firm, we're here in a capacity in governmental consulting, we work well with your current lobbyists, y'all couldn't be better represented by Mike Grissom, and we're excited about a potential opportunity to help leverage, but he's working on to also bring you additional funds into the county.
Can I, can I interrupt you just?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us your name and address from where you're from?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Jennifer Green, one-one-three East College Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three oh one.
Yeah, you can guess, ma'am.
You got it, you got it. So our firm Liberty Partners, Tallahassee, we've been in existence for fifteen years, just had our anniversary, prior to that, I was in-house with a couple different trade associations, and so my experience has been a lot of hands-on, we'll call it consulting. In the last five years, we've really taken a portion of our business and focused on, in addition to lobbying and seeking appropriations for our local government clients, we've really started to focus on how to leverage that to bring additional funds to a county or a city. Our footprint is by design, has been in the Panhandle, and has been in North Florida, there's a big reason, it has to do with your southern accents. There are areas of the state that we probably wouldn't do any work in, but right now, we've got several cities and a couple counties, the city of Milton over Santa Rosa County was the first city we started representing, and within the first year, six years ago, working with them, we learned more about wastewater treatment facilities and trying to get funding and how alternate water supplies, the state revolving fund loans, and all of that works. But we also represent the city of Chibley, City of Definiac Springs, Freeport, city of Fruitland Park is the only one that's kind of out of the footprint, and they're purely grants-related as well, and then Holmes County and Nassau County. So in terms of Swan County, what we think we could help y'all with is, one, is really something, get organized, talk about what are the priorities for the county, and obviously the easiest way to do that is look at your capital improvement list, what are the big projects you need? Everybody needs roads, everybody's concerned about wastewater, capacity, water, infrastructure right now is really important, and one of the reasons why it's important to look at that is we've got so much federal money coming down, which we probably never will be able to pay back, but a proportion of it. Morgan News is the legislature, obviously passed a very robust budget, and so July one, that budget includes a whole host of opportunities for grant funding, alternate water supply, you've got Resilient Florida, which anything related to, you know, positive, whether it's reuse or water-related, clean water, those are the type of things that are resonating with state agencies right now, like DEP, you're, obviously your water management district you work with, depending on the issue, might be the Department of Emergency Management, and there's a lot of economic incentives and programs at DEO, Department of Economic Opportunity. So what can we do? We would sit down with you again and walk through and say, what are the big projects? What are the needs? Very difficult to take a big project, whether it's a thirty million dollar, ten million dollar, fifty million dollar, and say, alright, we're gonna get this done. You gotta do it in pieces, we're going through something similar, city of Definiac Springs, their airport, which is the only airport in Walton County, which resonated, again, with funders, we took about forty million dollars in projects, so this is what we want to do at the airport, and broke them up in pieces. So last September, we sat down with their airport engineers, airport director, city manager, city council, and said, okay, explain to us each piece independently, what can we break them down? And we broke them down into tiny pieces. They just broke ground on a brand new terminal, they had a groundbreaking ceremony, and they also just pulled together funding for a eleven million dollar, we'll call it, project to resurface some like thunder run by over five thousand feet. We're working to leverage those funds, both from appropriations and American Rescue Plan Act dollars to draw down funds from Job Growth Grant Fund, and also the Triumph is, is around that footprint. All of this has been focused on, again, looking at the big picture of what's happening in the county, and trying to figure out a pathway for y'all in terms of needs, what order do you want to do things in, what is, you know, the most critical need, what makes sense that you can match funding with, and again, based on the funds you have, whether it's American Rescue Plan Act dollars, or it's what you have in your budget, what can you do to leverage that to have a higher return on investment? And so we will, again, we would look through your capital improvement plan, identify those projects that are important, help you, you know, figure out what's, what's a shovel-ready, what's not shovel-ready, what the total cost is, I mean, sometimes estimates are tough to get to, and before any application goes into an agency, sit down with that agency and have discussions. We were able to secure a six-point-three million dollar grant for city of Freeport, and that was primarily, again, working very closely with the Water Management District, and also with DEP ahead of time. We'd had discussions for months about what the needs were, and how quickly the city was growing, and what they needed on three-thirty-one as it related to infrastructure down that road. So, again, it's, it's thinking about long-term, it's getting started, getting started quickly, but it's also looking at being able to leverage. So we would, we would sit down and talk to you about projects, we will do grant writing and the grant management side of things. Know that sometimes in government, it's, it's not fun to have to, to wait and see what you're gonna need to do in terms of checking boxes, understand that you all have a grant writer on staff, which is fantastic, we can help complement that, we'll supplement versus supplant what you've already got, and be able to set up a process, an internal process, so that you can very easily comply. And it would be deadlines, depending on what the grant is, the requirement, maybe also working with your engineers as, if things are needing to be filed with whatever agency it is to pull down the funding for your reimbursement on your grant, we do a lot of helping you dot I's and cross T's, part of that has to do because we've represented CPAs for about twenty-five years, so we work with a lot of local government auditors and know what they need in terms of, in terms of documentation. The other thing that I think we can help you with is, is obviously the cities within the county, Alivo is a good example, what is it that you can work on a cooperative basis? A lot of agencies, state agencies, like to see cooperative arrangements. I'll give you an example, in Santa Rosa County, and this was just sort of a happenstance, we represent Hialeah River Water System, and about four years ago, we're introducing the CEO at the time to the executive director of the North Coast Border Water Management District, that ended up turning into just a discussion about the CEO saying, we're putting enough line into Eglin, looking at a water reuse project that would never have been possible, no one would have thought about it without the help of an agency like the Water Management District, and now we have the South Santa Rosa Regional Reuse Project, and the county's getting funding, and the city of Gulf Breeze. It was simply because you had an entity that was already gonna put that infrastructure in place, that you had an agency, because of the relationship, say, okay, what can we do to make this a clean water issue, and pull money out of DEP for both the city of Gulf Breeze and also the county? It takes a lot of moving parts, a lot of preparation, but at the end of the day, those are the type of things, I think, that resonate with the legislature and obviously the agency. They want to see funding go into something that is gonna have an impact, and if it's a regional, you live in a county, or a cooperative relationship, you can be able to get a lot more money into your county. I'm having to answer any questions, I did want Tim Parsons to come in for just a second, and then we'll be available, again, we can, we can answer any question you need right now, shoot them at us, no problem at all.
Name and address from where you're from.
Yes, sir, and I had to jot that down, I just moved to Definiac Springs in Walton County, it's twelve-eleven, I'm sorry, Tim Parsons, twelve-eleven, South Second Street, Definiac Springs, three-two-four, three-five, and I said, we mentioned that because of, I recently relocated the area that I grew up in over in Holmes County, largely because of the work that we're doing in Northwest Florida right now, a lot of the same services that Jennifer described, and just kind of want to briefly go over some of the things that I think has helped us be so successful in the last several years, is, you know, through the grant process, as Jennifer mentioned, it really complements legislative services that you're getting now, a lot of the grants that we see come through the legislature won't be made aware of them in its, in their inception, you know, when they're first being discussed, and we'll see them included in the budget, and, you know, once we're able to track those and be prepared to respond as soon as possible, I think have been pretty advantageous. Jennifer mentioned the six million that we were able to secure for the city of Freeport, I mean, that's, that's a large chunk of change that, you know, is difficult to get from an individual appropriation from the legislature, but something else, just wanted to briefly mention, something that came out this week, and we'd be happy to work with Mike on this, is local support grants, there was, I think, approximately a hundred and seventy-five million in federal, one-time federal stimulus dollars that were, that are being passed through the state to provide basically another opportunity to receive legislative funding, in my, my recollection, I don't believe the legislature's ever offered a program like this, but their portal opened on Monday, and had, had communication with some of the members of the joint Legislative Budget Commission about what that process for approval would look like, there's still information coming out, but, you know, the portal's open now, the deadline is July fifteenth, and they hope to award those funds by September fifteenth. So, I mean, those are just opportunities that, that we look for, to sort of leverage, you know, any of the, any projects and stuff that y'all are looking to get funded for as a match, or, you know, whatever, that we can also seek grant funding for, Resiliency Grants, that's, that's something that we're working pretty closely with Northwest Florida Water Management District on, they've, they've been extremely helpful, kind of being an advocate as well of DEP for different projects in the area, but I just wanted to hit on those, and then something else that I wanted to discuss, Jennifer's heard me mention this a few times, but she's really a Swiss Army knife, you know, when it, when it comes to different issues that, that come up, I mean, it's really like, we'll be sitting in situations like, did you ever think today that we would be working on X? You know, and one example was in Holmes County, with the EDC was, was having an issue with Department of Corrections, and they, we were worried it was gonna jeopardize some of the legislative funding, the four million dollars that we had in the budget for, for Holmes County, and it was a Friday, we're at the, we're at the prison, you know, Jennifer walking through the prison doors to sit down with the secretary of Department of Corrections, just, you know, to work with, with the two sides to make sure that they didn't close the work camp over in Holmes County. So I said, with a lot of issues like that, where, you know, I don't think it, it falls into the typical, you know, job description, so to speak, but, I mean, those are the services that, that we can offer, and, you know, just whatever issue comes up, we can help navigate, you know, with the bureaucratic maze and stuff that, that exists, so, and then also, I mean, we just, we're there as, as much as needed, we can be there, as an example that Jennifer gives, you know, we're available one hour or a hundred hours, like, whatever the project requires, same rate, but we like to see these projects all the way through. Turn that over to Jennifer.
Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Green? Ms. Harris?
No, sir, all right.
I got a couple. I've jotted down, thanks for coming, by the way, that you're here. I had jotted down a couple, number one is, how does a, in the event we want to do business with your firm, how does a contract, how's that structured? Is it, is it based on time? Is it one grant at a time? Is it, we go into a thirty-six month contract, and it's based on everything you can get us, every grant you can get us during that time, or is it, you know, one grant at a time, a percentage of each one? How's that, how's that work?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
We can be as, as creative and as competent as you need, one of the, I'll give you an example that probably would fit you all, and that is kind of a three-pronged approach, and one is, you know, a basic, a routine or seeking, you know, to do some research on it, you probably don't need that, you probably know what you, what you need, and it would be a quick up and running, we typically charge one percent to write the grant regardless, and again, we're negotiable, we just had a Nassau County, a four million dollar grant that we wrote for them, and we weren't gonna charge them the entire amount, so let's, let's be realistic, but that's about where we start with things, and then on the management side, if you choose to have us manage, and help you with compliance in the backend, it's typically five percent of the award, and most of the time, if not all of the time, your, your, your basically administrative fees can be included in the grant, so the only out of pocket to you would be on the grant writing side, and the advantage of having a small business and not having, you know, too bureaucratic messes, can be as nimble as we need to, to assist you. We want to see folks, we want to see things come across the show. I will say, in terms of the hourly rate, I need to mention this, an hour, a hundred hours, we've never done that, because it, we probably would find someone to pay us, because it, it just, it doesn't really matter what it takes to get done, so I think the easiest way for us is, we typically step into a shorter timeframe arrangement, to say, you know, six months, nine months, a year, and say, let's see how things go, let's, let's date a little bit before we get married, see if you're happy, I can stay thus far, I would be if not had a client say, we don't want to renew the forward, but let's see how it works, it's a new, a new concept, bringing in an outside consultant, and, and if it worked for you, it would be a longer term relationship. But we try to be targeted, we're gonna tell you what we're not comfortable writing, a lot of, a lot of the grants are going to be academic development, they're gonna be within a few agencies, FEMA at the federal level, I can tell you, we really, we can find you somebody who can help you with those, but they're not an area that, that we feel real comfortable with, we can help with narratives on the economic impact, why something is important, why, you know, what jobs are you creating, what certifications do you have, that type of thing, so I, I think the, for you all, a, a writing fee, and then a fee for the management on the backend would probably be a good start.
I'm gonna follow that up, so that I understood you correctly, I think I did, but on, on the fee, on the one percent to write the grant, that would technically be out of pocket from the county's funds, so if we are chasing even numbers of five million dollars or a million dollars, either one, one percent of that would be what your firm would ask us to pay upfront?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily, we're, we're realistic, again, we, that's a starting point, usually that's grants that are in the, you know, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar range, two-hundred-thousand-dollar range, we have a provision in all of our contracts that, as we enter into, start the writing grant, we agree, we walk through it and say, okay, what makes sense here? You're gonna find out very quickly what, what makes sense to write, what is, what doesn't make sense to write, and it's not gonna be all big grants, we would say, you know, the one percent would be that, that starting point for discussion, but as I mentioned, Nassau County, we have, our contract with them basically says, over a twelve-month period, the maximum they'll pay us is X amount, so if we, you know, we have a grant that we just wrote for them, that was about four million dollars, and it would have taken us well beyond the maximum for the year, we said, that's fine, no worries on that, we'll worry about it on the grant management side of things. So I, I think having all those discussions upfront, and having provisions that obviously your legal counsel reviews, but a case-by-case basis, there's no blanket, it, it really is important to talk about each project as you need forward.
And should, and should we do a grant, we do, we negotiate the fee, we're awarded the grant, your, your firm also, you know, offers administration of that grant on the backend to guarantee that we comply with it, and that was five percent of the award, so whatever the award is, five percent of that number, to administer it, no matter if it takes twelve months or thirty-six months to do, I mean, some of these projects are large, it takes time, so over the course of that time, five percent?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Yes, i- if it's allowable, most, most grants have that, again, built in to, you can have an administrative fee included in it, so that would not be out of pocket, if a grant restricts it and says you can't, we certainly have a discussion about what would be, you know, what would be the appropriate fee for it, but for most part, most grants have a start and end date in terms of what the compliance, what your, what your performance period is on it, and then the checklist of everything that's needed within that timeframe, and so we would, as we start writing the grant, we'd have that discussion, but once you're awarded, we'd say, okay, do you want us to manage? Because it may be something that your grants, your grant staff says, we can do, this is not a huge amount of compliance, but we would determine that well before you all even look and apply for a grant, and say, here's the strength, because it may be, there are those grants that you go, or not, we don't want the strengths that go with it, or this would be complicated, or we don't want to have two SRF loans or whatever.
Okay, we have?
One more.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I have never met her, had a chance to speak to her, or anybody with her firm, so I'm...
You have some questions, I'll go with you, so we're good.
Your, your firm, y'all have an office, I know you mentioned the Panhandle, and, and he lives in Definiac Springs, but you have an office in Tallahassee, so you have some boots on the ground there every day, facilitating some of this stuff?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, our, our primary, our headquarters in Tallahassee, and I own a part of a seventeen thousand square foot building, we're on the same block, just a, a block from the Capitol, where they're twenty-four-seven, we have, we actually have a, a building that's about five stories, and we have a lot of single one-two people, having jobs, and we are, yes, we are in Tallahassee, and that's our headquarters, and, and all our clients, and this usually helps our local government clients, but all our clients are welcome, if you're in Tallahassee, and they've got to be in the DEP about a permit or something, our, our office is open to you, we have a full boardroom, we have individual offices, but yes, we are right there, we walk by the Capitol on day-to-day basis, Tim is opening our second office, we probably should have explained that, the, the commute between Tallahassee and all the way over to Milton is, we put a lot of miles on our cars, and a lot of, again, a lot of what we're doing, especially with local governments, is not, we can't just talk once, we, we can't, some of it is a community-related issue, it was working with chambers, coordinating with the city, so having, physically having someone over there, so Tim, Tim is based in Tallahassee, but he's gonna open the Definiac office to cut our time a little bit.
Yeah, I'm good. Mary, you good, evening?
I was gonna say that, that when I first walked in, I thought, Tim, I thought, man, Bron Tim, he sounds like the Sanses, this is like, I miss the memo, I did a double check there for a second, get that off?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, sure, it was during inauguration, and, and I think a lot of folks did, well, the government out, well, it was cold, Tim had a wool coat on, and we were walking through the Capitol, and an unnamed senator's wife rounded him and said, he worked so hard for you, and I, I, she knew him, and, and I looked at him, I said, don't take it.
I just thank you. And welcome to Free State of Florida.
On the administrative part, the backend of a grant, can you kind of go briefly over what, what, what you do there exactly? I mean, is it from A to Z on that part of it, or is it, we gotta gather all the information and get it to you, and then you just do the checklist on it?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I'll, let's use Definiac Springs as an example, and they're, they're a big example, because basically what Definiac has done is they have, they, they're, they're a grants person, in-house grants person, and that person moved on, and they took that position, and they just got rid of the position, so we're gonna outsource everything to y'all, for punishment on that one, but what that entails is, everything, you basically catalog, let's just talk about what we're gonna catalog everything, for the grant, what the requirements are, set it up upfront, have regular communication with your finance person, have regular communication with the agency, assist with, for example, things like, if there's, let's say, documentation, or if there is drawings, or something that's required by the agency from your engineers, we would work with your staff, with your engineers, and say, hey, just a reminder, this is what's needed, and then, and be that go-between, between that and the agency to help close out the grant at the end. I think personally, we would work closest with someone in your finance department, that's where your invoices are gonna come through, making sure that all your programs have the right title on it, making sure that you're not going over the grant amount, because a lot of it's gonna be reimbursement to the county as you pull down funds from the state, we'll make sure everything's there, we'll communicate with the agency, put it in writing, the agency to say, is there anything else that's missing before we close this, this grant out, and the information certainly is gonna have to come from your staff, we'll keep you, you know, on time with it, there may be some along the way that we can, that we can, we can help you with internal processes, we had an example of in, in Definiac, where there were reimbursements that were being submitted to, to DEO by the engineering firm, and what we looked at was, okay, this is a little, well, it's unquestionable, but you really need to have the city looped in on this, this needs to be coming from the city, we can have it all, and we can help you put it all together, but your finance director or someone on the staff or the local government needs to be officially submitting that with the agency, if there's a resolution that needs to be done, that you all need to pass, that we can, hey, the agency, this would be good, just submit it with it, or a cover letter, from a compliance standpoint, we work with your staff to be able to say, you might want to consider putting this on the agenda, talk with your legal counsel, or here's a draft letter that we can send to the agency, so it's kind of, it's, it's the A to Z in terms of it.
Thank you. Ms. Fleming?
I, I would question, that, that I would act, pretty much have answered them, but I was at the same time, I, I enjoy it, and say it, because it, it happened to, it's kind of like what we're trying to do, trying to be creative, and like what you said, we started out by infrastructure, having stuff in place, you know, and that, and those jobs are often coming now, if you like, shoot, pop that in, I, I enjoy that, so.
You have one, do you?
I got one more.
First of all, first of all?
Um, you mentioned Mike Grissom, we recently hired him, a couple months back, while he's up on, and he's done a great job for us, could you elaborate on, you know, how your office and Mike would complement or work together with each other?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, if I may? Really important, and, and we're big communicators, really important because being, also on the lobbying side, everybody hear things, I mean, we're hearing things, and we're trying to be able to connect things together, particularly as it relates to any appropriations, Mike is CP girl, and obviously has a great relationship, he came out of the DEO, knows, you know, that agency well, upfront, having those meetings, saying, once we face this, we're gonna talk about this, or lay it all out and say, okay, these are the priorities, the commissioner must talk through the projects, here's what we're gonna do, and then keep that communication going, so if there's a discussion, we're having it at DEP, letting your lobbyist know, he's, he's the one who's legally able to represent you for the agency, but if we're talking simply about, you know, get grant project, we can say, hey, listen, this is what we're hearing out of the agency, or, hey, we got this intel, this might be helpful, or there may be something, you know, that we don't know, because we don't know you well enough, that Mike would be able to say, hey, this, this was a long-term project, here's, here's what was problematic or not problematic, and, and I think teamwork is, is an approach that we take very seriously, that includes with your, you know, with your lobbyists, your engineers, your legal counsel, if you need anyone on your staff, I think it's incredibly important, nobody gets sort of left out on a limb and not know, because the only way to really get all this done is to, is to work together.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Anybody else, first?
I would say, you had mentioned already, larger grants, you guys would maybe not take the whole five percent or one percent, well, not the smaller grants, as, you know, sometimes they can be attractive to chase after, maybe it was as small as departments, a five thousand dollar grant, we were on a list, or that same term, feelings applied to that, but not a whole lot there to take that five thousand more, I'm just...
Oh, great, Mr. Chairman, if I may? It doesn't matter, the amount, I shouldn't say this, I'm a terrible business, but the amount doesn't matter, what matters is, what are the needs? And if it's, you know, a five thousand dollar grant, and the application is a page long, go at it, if your, you know, fire department needs equipment, or something similar, you, you know, figure the department, that's something that, what's really important is for us to work, if you all just say, what are priorities? And it may be that you have twenty-five small things, but all those small things are important because you're, you're trying to reserve funding for one big project, we're gonna be realistic with you to say, is it worthwhile to apply for the grant, because maybe the, you know, the backside of it, I'll give you an example, it was a twenty-two thousand dollar grant for the city of Definiac Springs for their airport, and it was a general, it wasn't earmarked for anything, and as we, we review all grant agreements as part of our compliance with them, we did not apply for this grant, this was one of those that had happened before we were doing that work, and as we were going... work, and as we were going through the grant agreement, one of the stipulations, the strings, was that they had to institute a mask policy, have it in place, and we went, hmm, that's bad. And so we talked to the airport director and said, just FYI, here's the strings, you don't want this bought back, and is it really worth twenty-two thousand dollars? And the council said, no, thank you FAA, well, um, we don't want that. And we helped draft a letter, a cover letter, the council approved and communicated it with our FAA contact and said, we appreciate the grant, but given what, what the stipulations are in the grant agreement, we can't make those stipulations, so keep the money. And surprisingly, they wanted to continue discussing and saying, well, what can we do to fix it, even though the grant agreement said you can't change anything. That's the type of thing, uh, we don't want y'all to get, you know, hung up down red, and I think it really, it really depends on, on, on the need, uh, as we look forward and looking at them, you know, in general, what are those needs? What's lowing for, with big projects, being just as realistic about those large projects, um, small bites, medium bites, and apples are operable.
Appreciate, uh, just one blank to fill, and I always work to, appreciate that.
We want to thank you for coming, we appreciate it, it's very informative, and, uh, for y'all that don't know, she didn't get into one o'clock this morning, and had to be here at nine for Tallahassee, so we do appreciate you coming. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
And y'all don't have to listen to this whole thing if y'all won't leave. With that, we're gonna move on to the, uh, solid waste, and Mr. John Locklear is here, Locklear Associate, Associates, to discuss, uh, options on the landfill, reopening a landfill, and so I'm trying to get him out of here as well, so we're gonna let him go.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Um, if you recall, I was stood right here before you, uh, some six months or so ago, um, kind of covering the questions, uh, following the, there's significant increase in your disposal cost for your current, uh, landfill contract, and, uh, what you asked me about primarily at that point in time was, what would it look like if we had our own Class I landfill again here in the county as you used to? And at that time, I told you just sort of, you know, from my experience, and thirty years in the Florida's whole base business, that, uh, I didn't really think that your, the volume of your waste was economically, would make it economically viable to, to operate your own landfill. Um, and we sort of had that general discussion, uh, county then tasked me with, uh, you know, putting pen to paper and, and sort of really getting some hard numbers on, on what that would look like if you did, uh, build and operate your own Class I landfill again. I believe you have, uh, our report.
Commissioner says behind ten.
Ten three.
Ten three. Um, so I'll try to be brief, uh, since you do have this, but feel free to interrupt me with any questions as I go along. But essentially what we did in this, in this report is we, we developed a conceptual landfill out in property that you already own, uh, adjacent to the existing closed landfills, and we looked at your waste stream and population projections for a twenty-year period, which is what I suggested to you, and what that, uh, population increase would result in your waste stream increase, which was fairly small, but nonetheless, we looked at it over a twenty year period. And then we sized a conceptual landfill for that waste volume. It was about, uh, eleven acres, give or take, uh, which would be the capacity that you would need to handle your waste for twenty years, uh, just Swan County, under the projection. And then from there, we, we use, uh, the most recently available construction data, which is at the Osilla landfill, uh, which the bid came out, uh, last year, late last year. Um, and I'll caveat that, but I, with what I know, everyone is aware of, the construction prices are escalating on a weekly basis, it seems, so, so take that with a grain of salt. Um, we looked at that number, and you, utilizing the conceptual eleven acre design, uh, we estimated roughly a six million dollar construction cost. Uh, that included a little bit more, uh, than what Osilla's costs per acre were, because Osilla already has some of the infrastructure that you would need, roads, uh, scales, you know, some of the things that are already in place and paid for. So this is kind of a whole new, you know, whole system, so it's not, uh, straight apples to apples. So it's a little bit higher per acre, and then we also included, uh, given the, you know, the nature of construction right now, we included a, a decent contingency amount of twenty percent in there, uh, just, cause, you know, it's a pretty big unknown. I think what I mentioned to you, probably the biggest unknown in, in constructing was your geotechnical characteristics of the site, it's a harsh, you know, where Swan County is, it's a harsh terrain, um, you know, who knows what you're gonna find, so, uh, given that, we felt it was prudent to have some additional money, twenty percent in there to cover, sort of, uh, you know, if you find a sinkhole, or, or other, you know, less desirable geotechnical characteristics, you're gonna have to increase the design and construction costs, whether it's geotextile, or, or some other woven, you know, remedy to, to design. So anyway, you're looking at about six million dollars. And then we, we looked at what would it cost not only to build it, but to operate it. We, we assumed some costs would remain relatively unchanged, your administrative costs, um, you know, um, your collection costs, we just assumed all that would be the same, since it already goes to the transfer station at the same facility, it made sense that it would just come to the same facility. But then we looked at operating costs, and, um, those, if you'll see on page three of our report, uh, they follow up with about eight major categories, uh, there are a few other minor ones, but these are the major ones, labor, uh, equipment acquisition, uh, replacement, you do have some equipment on site now, but, but, uh, some of the bigger ticket items, you don't, you don't have, like a compactor, uh, things like that, uh, obviously fuel and equipment, uh, maintenance. Uh, cover soil, we, we did an evaluation, uh, of the site, went out and did some hand duster boarding to see what kind of material is at the site, and it's kind of been cut a little bare over the years, you already used a lot of it for closing the existing landfill. So we didn't find a whole lot of good usable soil, so we had to make an assumption you have to bring that in, that's, you know, not only for during construction, but daily cover. So that's, uh, a good, um, cost there, that, you know, uh, we could really cover with on-site soil. Uh, the other big ticket item, I think I mentioned last time, was, uh, leachate hauling at disposal. So we, we spoke with City of Livo, and we provided, you know, obviously this is conceptual, so we don't have any data on leachate quality for this site, it doesn't exist, uh, we provided the city's consultant Jacobs, uh, with some Osilla and Columbia County's windfield landfill leachate data, um, and they took a look at it, and we, we gave them volume, uh, projections based on, you know, life of the landfill, you have higher volume at first, and then it goes down. Um, and they responded back that, you know, there were certain concerns on their part, um, based on the characteristics of the leachate, which is not, I wasn't surprised, a lot of city, smaller city facilities, when you, you send something of this nature that's very different than, you know, residential or commercial wastewater, uh, the system isn't set up for it. Uh, so we assumed based on their response that we wouldn't be able to send it to the city. Uh, now, may, maybe that would work out, maybe not, but we felt that it would be, uh, prudent to look at the cost of not having that as an option. So next option is to go with a commercially available vendor, and the nearest one's in Jacksonville. So that was a pretty significant cost, not just for disposal treatment, but hauling, uh, a larger volume of, of leachate to, all the way to Jacksonville. So that was a, that was a big cost. And then to a lesser extent, uh, you have, you know, you have closure, long-term care, escrows, the state requires you put money away every year to pay for closure, and long-term care, monitoring of, of the facility after closure. Um, and there's routine groundwater, and methane, and, and service water monitoring, those sorts of things. And then we assumed, uh, that you'd have to bond out the destruction costs, you have debt service payments. So those are the major categories of operating costs, and I'm happy to go to any of them that you like, but I think, you know, at this point, if you wanna skip back to the page six, is the conclusions, um, and essentially, it kind of proves what I told you before was right, um, the numbers bore out as I expected them to. Uh, in year one, which is also all this information from table sixteen, um, you know, what I basically did was, all right, well, what are the costs, you know, and what are the costs per ton, and then how much tonnage would you need to break even, under those costs? So, uh, in year one, which is the highest cost year, um, you need about seven hundred and thirty-three tons of waste. And the reason I did that is because at the last time we were here, it was sort of, you know, just put out there, could we work with other counties together, um, and bring in waste, either as, you know, partners like Osilla, or as clients, or, you know, customers? Um, so I was, I wanted to kind of give you a ballpark idea, well, if you did that, what would it take? Now, take that with a grain of salt, too, because if I'm bringing in more waste, I gotta build a bigger landfill, so my costs are gonna go up. So that assumes fixed costs that I'd estimated here, and what would the tonnage be, but it really isn't completely accurate, because it's gonna go up, you're gonna need more operators, um, you know, your landfill's gonna fill up quicker, um, so it would actually probably be even higher. So, uh, and then that, that tails off after five years to about five, uh, five hundred and twelve tons, which I think the number I threw out to you before was five hundred tons, is what, at least in my experience, is you need to at least break even on a Class I landfill in Florida.
That's per day, years?
Five hundred tons per day, yes. And you're, Randy, for the wrong, like a hundred and sixty?
At the most.
At the most, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and sixty, so you're reasonably off. So that was one aspect we looked at, and then we also looked at your cost per ton, uh, compared to what you pay now, uh, and that's in table fifteen, and in year one, you're looking at paying a hundred and seventy-eight percent increase in what you pay now. Um, so Randy and I spoke yesterday, or day before, about, I, I think some of my numbers of your current hauling disposal were a little off, and actually would be higher than a hundred and seventy-eight percent. I think I had overestimated what you're paying now, um, but nonetheless, you're looking at, you know, almost double, uh, increase of what you're paying now, uh, the haul, the hauling dispose under your current contract. And so, you know, my recommendation, well, I'm just bringing information to you to decide what you wanna do, but what I told you last time, and I, I think this report bears it out, is that it would be a pretty significant cost increase to you if you operated on your own landfill. Uh, maybe that's something you still wanna look at, because you control your own destiny, which is what a lot of people have, have talked about last time. Um, but I would caution you that, that, you know, this report demonstrates pretty clearly that we'd probably need a partner or partners to really not, you know, raise taxes quite a, assessment quite a bit, uh, in order to do so. Um, and with that, that, that's the gist of, of the report to you, I'm happy to go to the details and answer any questions I have. Commissioner, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. The insect pill system cost per ton, you got two hundred and forty-two dollars in year twenty-three, that's with just us dumping our garbage in our landfill.
That is great, sure. And now that, you know, and the rea, the reason why in year one it's so high is, well, you have some upfront costs in your equipment purchase, of course, uh, but leachate, uh, in a landfill, it, it's a curve, so when you have open conditions, and it's not partially closed, and you have the highest amount of rainfall, so you have the, the largest amount of leachate, and that, that drops over time pretty significantly, um, as you cover more and more area, but, um, that's pretty standard. So we did a conceptual leachate generation curve based on tonnage and, you know, disposal and all that. Um, but yeah, so year one's gonna be your most expensive year, after about year five, it starts to flatten out, you see, it's a pretty steep curve in leachate generation from one to five, and then it flattens out relatively. Um, so yeah, that, year one to five are your most expensive years.
Well, when I was over at Osilla, they talked about reu, or pumping the leachate back up?
Recirculating, yes, sir, you do have that as an option, so it's essentially what that allows, and it's permissible through DEP, is you collect the leachate, and you basically pump it back up on top and let it percolate back down. Um, a, and that's good, it does a couple of things, one, it speeds up methane production, if you're actually capturing the methane, that's great, so a larger landfill, you might have a gas-to-energy system, for example. This one isn't big enough to make that viable, even Osilla's not really big enough to make it viable yet. Um, but the, the caveat to that is, it, it, it's not really eliminating that disposal cost, it's postponing that disposal. So eventually it's gonna percolate back down, and then the, the landfill has a holding capacity, we call it, of what, you know, like a sponge, how much liquid can it hold? Eventually you're gonna reach that point, and you can't put it back on top, it just runs, it runs right on. Um, so eventually you're gonna have to pay the piper and, and haul it off and dispose it, but that's a good temporary sort of pause button on, on leachate. So you can divert some costs, cause you can postpone for a bit, however, over years, I mean, it takes, you know, it can hold a lot of, of, depending upon how much waste you have in there. Uh, I mean, it's a good postponement tactic, but it's not an elimination tactic.
What if you had your own sewer water plant that was big enough to handle it?
You, you can do that, now, the only thing I would say is, and, you know, and the city rightfully looked at it and said, we may need some different treatment train, you know, based on the, what's in this leach, leachate, um, so it may be an expensive process. I'm not a wastewater engineer, and I want to pretend that I am, um, but, you know, conventional residential, commercial wastewater, uh, you know, the process used for that may not be enough for this. Uh, one of the things we, we hear a lot is that we kill all their bugs, um, because our pH is, is off, and, uh, we have some high concentrations of some things that bugs don't like. Um, so it's not uncommon, uh, you know, I, years ago, I worked for Pottent County, and they had a relationship with City of Palatka, where the county took the sludge, and the city took the leachate, and what we had to do was not give in big slugs, we had to put it at different manholes throughout the city at, at little increments, so that it would, you know, dilute it with other water. Um, so there are ways around it, but still, once you start getting to a high enough volume, um, it can be problematic. So if you had your own system, it might need to be expensive, is what I'm saying, it might need to be more than a typical wastewater plant, because you'd be, uh, you'd be processing just leachate, you know?
Well, you know, when you first start that landfill, you know, you gotta open hole there, and it's, it's gonna be a lot of rainwater.
You, you try to divert that as much as you can, obviously, but it, it is predominantly, it's driven by stormwater.
So, well, how does the, I, I, when I was over at Osilla, the, the city of Greenville processes their leachate, they got a plant there on site.
Yep.
Do you know how, how that works out?
Yeah, they, they've been doing that since day one. Um, what Osilla has is they have, uh, two options, one, they have that holding pond, the leachate collection pond, it's a double-lined pond, and they aerate it, which helps, you know, make it a little bit more palatable to the wastewater plant. Um, I am not familiar with if, if Greenville had to do any, you know, improvements to their facility to accept it, I don't know the answer to that, uh, but they do have a, a fairly good, uh, rate of disposal, uh, cost, uh, per kilogram, uh, with the city, uh, but, but I don't know the in particulars of the treatment chain.
But even with all that said, is it, whether we've got our own processing, or you haul it somewhere else, is it gonna matter very much in the end, end game?
Well, I mean, i- i- if an existing wastewater treatment facility locally could accept it and take it, that's gonna be a significant cost savings to you, because you're not hauling it to Jacksonville, or, but if you had to build one and operate one, I don't think you're gonna see the same savings, so, um, you know, Citrus County, for example, many, many years ago, um, built their own wastewater, basically leachate treatment facility on site at the landfill, the central landfill, uh, and it was so problematic and difficult to, to achieve the required out ethyl, um, standards, that they shut it down, and they haul it to a private company now. So, um, it's not typically done that you, you treat it all yourself, unless you're, you know, a large, um, typically private, or, you know, South Florida-type landfill, where you have enough volume that makes sense economically, because that's another thing, is, you know, your cost per gallon is gonna be astronomical for treatment if you're only treating your own leachate, so, I, I, I don't think I would recommend that, but.
Well, I was just thinking, if we had to build a treatment plant anyway?
If you did anyway, then sure, your costs will go down, as opposed to taking it, you know, because it's twenty-seven cents a gallon to haul it, as well as it's Jacksonville, that's, that's really high.
Yeah.
Um, so that would be a huge savings. Would it, would it make up the difference in, in, you know, make it a little better, for sure, but wouldn't make up the, the difference in all the other costs?
Any idea of, if you brought other counties in, what would it reduce that cost to, if, just gives, give us an idea? Are we still gonna get anywhere close to what we're paying now?
Well, if you got seven hundred and thirty-three tons, uh, you would be equivalent to what you're paying now. Look, the caveat that I gave you earlier, that actually might probably be a little higher, because the cost is gonna be higher, that, that's a, another level of effort in, in evaluating. So you're probably looking at maybe eight hundred and fifty tons, let's just say, um, and I don't think you have the waste close enough to make that work, because if counties have to haul, a- as you know, under the Osilla contract, Dixie County is further away than everybody else, and then other two counties, not, not the host county. the other two counties, not the host county, but the other two, have to pay them a transportation equalization payment every year. And so, you know, again, that, just, you know, thinking off the cuff here of what's around you and what's already tied up contractually, Osilla and elsewhere, I don't think you have the waste close enough to get there, honestly.
Well, that's what we were trying to get to the bottom of. Is that any other commissioners show any questions? We've walked where?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you're telling us, I appreciate you introducing me last time. You did a good study, complete study. At the same time, we, we have need, have one. When I be wrong, I ask you what would be the best one?
If you want my professional opinion, Mr. Chair, I'm very happy to offer it. You know, that's a tough question because, as you all, I think, stated last time, it is nice to be able to control your own destiny. I think there was some concern about, well, you know, you have contractual disposal rates for X number of years. What, you got shocked by the recent increase, but they shock us again five years from now? Sure. It depends on what the market looks like and how many options you have out there. And there aren't that many, to be honest, within reasonable distance. So there is a value to being able to control your own destiny. The question is, what is that worth? How much is that worth to you? My recommendation would be, I would be negligent if I told you that I thought building your own landfill by yourself is a good idea. It's not. You know, that cuts me out a lot of money, you know? So you know I'm telling the truth. It's not viable. I would recommend that perhaps you continue, every year, conversations with your neighbors, with Osilla, with New River, with all the other options that are out there to you. To me, your best-case scenario would be is if you could become a member of Osilla or New River or some other consortium of regional landfills. That would be your ideal situation. Because then you do have some control over your own destiny. Whether or not any of those entities would accept you, I don't know. Maybe not. It would obviously have to benefit them in some way, understandably. That's probably your best scenario. Failing that, I guess you can continue to have conversations with your neighbors about the future, whether you can work together with ones that aren't already in some sort of co-op. And maybe, maybe the financial comparison switches in five years, you know? Maybe your costs go up so much and their costs go up that you can work together. But just, you know, if you just ignore what it costs you now and look at, what does it cost me to do this? Right? You need at least 500 tons, more like 800 to 1,000, really. If I was running a business, that's what I would need to make it break even. And I think you have a hard time finding that waste within a reasonable distance. So keeping, exploring those options over time is probably prudent. So if, or nothing else, when your contract is up and you're renegotiating, at least you have no, I've got option A, B, and C, they cost X. Maybe it is worthwhile to you to pay more to be a customer or a member at Osilla than it is, you know, to go to a private facility somewhere else. That's a political, economic decision for down the road. But that would be my recommendation, is don't do this. But keep your options open and keep talking to your neighbors and explore them as time goes on because the economics may shift. May at some point, these numbers balance out a bit more.
Well, even, even if you did decide to get a landfill route, you've still got to pay for disposal until you can get the landfill running. So that's a double whammy.
It is. Yeah, it's about, I would estimate probably three years from the time you said go, before you even put any garbage. And that's, that's if everything goes well. If I don't find any terrible sinkholes or big issues. Not to mention, public, you know, the public doesn't like landfills near, you know, you don't want it in your backyard. So, you know, you've got to consider all that as well. So it's not easy to get a new landfill permitted, at all, not at all.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, and I don't know if you know, but what's the life expectancy of Osilla? How many years would they have? And my question for asking that is, is maybe it's not time for us to do, I mean, like you said, it's four of those option beds, and when they run out of property, maybe if we have a site that's good, we could become a partner.
Right. Mr. Chair, I know roughly, I don't know how the numbers off the top of my head, but that's like those master plans for the waste that the members they have now. So that's assuming they don't get any other partners or customers. They have explored that in the past. For example, León County approached them about being a customer. That would, that would change the game, obviously, if their tonnage is. But for their member counties, they've got about 70 more years of capacity. It's a pretty big area. We just built cell four, and there are nine master plan. And then we can go up on, it's a, it's a nice big box. And so you get good geometry, you can go really high. So you're looking at 70 years. Sorry, I'm sure you're hoping for something a little shorter.
I didn't know.
Yeah, it's, yeah, right. No, it's, it's a long time. It's a long time. Sorry.
Anybody else who was walking here?
Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Take care.
This time, Mr. Chair, so I'll just kind of turn it over to you on the rest of it.
Okay. Commissioners, if you'd like, we can go ahead and take a look at, figure out which tab to go to first. Why don't we save the budget discussion till the last? So let's go to tab 2A, if you want. 2A. And I'm just going to point out that staff is not asking for a decision on anything. I know the chairman covered that previously, and I want to emphasize that. We're trying to give you lots of information, and it'll take some time to sort through it. But we'll talk more about it, I'm sure, as we go forward and even get into our budget workshops. But behind tab A, you'll see at the top of this schedule, you have essentially our waste management contract, cost per ton, transportation costs that we're currently paying under that contract. And that's broken out by year. And then below that, you have the same contract for disposal. But in that scenario, we provided you a cost if we were to provide the transportation. And you've got details of how those calculations were placed together and the backup information. I won't go through all of that right now, but we ran numbers on the mileage. Commissioner Land and us communicated late last night when he looked at the maps there in your packet and said, well, the map isn't correct. And I agree that the map isn't correct. And I checked it again this morning. I would say, though, that the costs are going to be very close, even though the map is off a little bit. We use Google Maps, and I've tried MapQuest, and believe it or not, both of them will start our landfill in the same location on a map. But the routes we used and the overall costs are going to be very close, having said that. So behind tab A, we ran this with a fuel cost of $3.50 a gallon. Behind tab B, we ran it at $7 a gallon of fuel costs. But in any event, you start out with waste management, our current contract, the tiered disposal rate expense that's in the contract, and then you have a total cost over five years. And then, again, the next scenario was we provided self-hauling. You've got a price for that. We made some projections on hauling to Osilla. That's, again, self-haul. We included the cost of the trucks and the trailers and everything in each of these scenarios, and you've got the backup information on those as well. Next page, you have New River. We switched these out from your packet because we had an idea of what their number would be, and I ran that originally. And then the reason we switched these out in your packet was because there's a formula they're using for a CPI increase annually, and we ran those. So that's the new information on that second page in there, going to New River. Behind tab B, you've got the same scenario. The difference here is that we use $7 a gallon for fuel for self-hauling. I don't have any idea if it's going to go to $7, if it could go to $8, it may drop back. But we gave you a couple of scenarios just so that you have an idea. And what's interesting about these different scenarios is, if you look closely, is that particularly on this tab behind, or behind tab B, is we've not adjusted anything on the waste management transportation piece. My hope is if fuel goes down or it doesn't go as high as what we forecast for self-hauling. So those numbers are going to be off a little bit, and I just want you to be aware of that because it will have everything to do with what the cost of fuel actually is. But I think in either of these scenarios, you'll find that there are enormous differences in the costs regardless of where we take this waste. I mean, they're very, very close overall. Do you have any questions on anything behind tab two? We ran waste management, Osilla, and New River in these scenarios. And we gave you a lot of information, and it's done by year. Like I said, the New River proposal includes the formula that they called out in their proposed annual local agreement, if we were to consider doing that.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Who are you?
Mr. Harris. Oh, and I didn't have time to look for it. I have it somewhere, but I don't know where it's at. In a mountain, a county backboard, that would be the time to time. But on the current waste management contract, I think Waste Management's in the room. But is there any type of escalator clause in the event that, I mean, fuel's knocking on $6 a gallon on the street. I'm sure that Waste Management doesn't pay that. I call it buying bulk. But in the event fuel goes to $7, is there anything in that current contract that gives them the right to increase, like a fuel surcharge and the rates? Because these rates in here are based on current.
That's correct.
Which doesn't include a rate hike, so to speak.
That's correct. They have the ability to increase it up to $27 a ton.
Okay. And when we ran, these numbers are at?
2051.
Okay.
And when we first ran numbers, I mean, we looked at our cost, and it was around at, I think, $18. I think, Mr. Chairman, is what we had discussed before.
Yeah.
And they were at 2051. Under the contract, they can go to 27. But I think they're, they've been monitoring the cost of fuel as well. So it is what it is. But there is that provision in that contract.
It's just striking to me how close they are when they are. I mean, you ask a lot of money. If you put it in the big scheme of things, it's, it kind of shocks me that it even came out as close as it did on all of them.
Right. I agree.
I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
They're all relatively, I mean, they're all relatively close. If you look at them over, at the bottom line, over the five-year spread, you take the disposal and the transportation. We just need to make sure Waste Management stays at that 2051.
Yeah.
Right? More goes down.
Well, we, Waste Management's just got their disposal rate in half, and we'd be in good shape.
We're living in a pool, man.
No, I'm just kidding. This business is business. You know, it's an expense that we all incur, you know, from the box of cereal on the shelf to hauling garbage. So decent fuel makes a world of money.
Well, Mr. Bo was after me about this workshop for so long. But I just, you know, that's, that's why it took so long to get here where we're at, because it's a lot of information from a lot of different folks and a whole lot of calculations and time spent during this. We have spent since last time we got through the budget, day one, coming to this, this whole scenario we have in front of us today.
And it took, in all fairness, many months to obtain, to obtain some of the outside information that we needed in order to start running these scenarios. So it's been a handful. There's a lot of information here.
Well, if nobody has any questions on the disposal that Mr. Harris just went over, do you want to move on to?
I'd go to tab four, maybe. Now, this is the results of the RFP. And I know we have probably Tom is here somewhere.
Tommy, Mr. Dana Miller here, Mr. Waste.
Right. So if you have questions for them, you can certainly ask them. But you have a lot of information on the results of our request for proposals. You've got your tabulation page there. And then, you know, I was pleased with the numbers when they came back. We can, if you'd like, we just go through POPS first. We ran a couple of scenarios. In fact, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, in case you have questions, would you like to just, like, you should all pick up, questions on what they had presented?
If you can get off the naming address, please.
It's on the hardy. We're POPS sanitation. We have it off at Set 2 on that Howard Street in Hollywood.
Like you want. You want to just kind of go through what you proposed?
Yes, sir.
Just so the public understands.
So the good thing about a bottom POPS kind of deal, we can create what works best for Swan County. Lassen County is totally different with Swan. They have a different, there are a lot of rural counties, different dynamics, there's different, you know, everything involved. So when we set this down, we built it for Swan County with some extra options in it with, you know, just that in mind. But we came in at a curbside pickup at 1677 tomorrow, which comes up to $201.24. And then there's some, some real due curbside pickup on white foods, and...
Tommy, just let me interrupt for one second, if I could, because it's going to be helpful, I think, for commissioners, if you find the page that you're referring to. Commissioners, it's...
Page 15.
These aren't all numbers, but you can go back about, yeah, 15 pages maybe.
Well, it says 15, it's page 15 at the bottom.
And I'm talking about the one that says the summary page.
Yes, sir.
The RFP summary page.
Yes, sir.
So if you go back about 12 to 15 pages and look at the top, you'll see one that says RFP summary page.
So it's got appliances and figures, $3, and orders one time per month, so...
So, well, basically, that would be if you wanted to do county-wide pickup. And all we did was go off of the RFP and answer those questions. My advice would be not add that $3. Let people either drop it off or let them call us and we're going to get it. Because if you look at appliances, how often do you change your appliances out? Five years, 10 years?
Most of the time when I bring them, when they take home, with them.
So we did put the $3 in there for that. We have an extra option for an extra $9 weekly pickup, if you need the extra pickup. And that $3 comes up, I give it a quick, that goes to appliances, yard waste, and furniture. And so if you want to do a county-wide price, because again, that's how the RFP was written, that's that price. Me, I would do it as an individual on an individual basis. Save money.
And that scenario, he would provide the basic service of weekly garbage pickup, a customer that would want individually, or something else picked up, they would call and schedule that, and they would pay the difference themselves.
Customer money for them.
Because we had calls from some of the public, and we discussed this before, commissioners, if you remember, you had some people complaining that they even generated less household garbage than others. You had some people complaining that they even generated less household garbage than others. And some of them said, well, why don't we just pay by the bag? Clearly, that would be difficult for us to do, but in this particular case, with these other services over and above the household waste, this was presented kind of buffet style, where people go through. And if the board wanted to provide all of these services countywide, he's giving you numbers for that. To do it countywide, but if not, another alternative would be to provide just the household garbage pickup and then allow customers that want washing machines and appliances picked up and other things, or they want an extra pickup per week, they could pay the difference and enter into an agreement with the vendor to do that themselves. Go ahead, Tommy, I didn't.
If you go to that page fifteen I was talking about, that's more of a, you know, hey, this is where we're at. This is a little bit more detail, how we can do this, what we'd like to see. Well, it gave some other options in there, like option two, let us run the transfer station. Let us keep all the employees that are there. You know, and then have drop sites where if that person doesn't want to play, they can bring a refrigerator to it. You know, have those kind of things. But if you look at the counties around, there's a corridor here in the middle, Swan County, the Jefferson County. And they're not doing curbside pickup yet. But you look at gas, then you look at all those smaller counties, just smaller than us, they're doing curbside pickup. So, you know, you look at the future, where is it going? That's where it's going to go. You all have out of towners jumping off in them, dropping off in them all this way. We even included in option two, you all have an ordinance where a household can bring four tires. For the way our computer system works, they bring them in, we take a picture of it, and we attach it to it. So you don't have to, have to change the ordinance on it. So we looked into this, we looked at every aspect. And what I'd love to do is sit down with Mr. Randy, and Mr. Franklin, and Mr. White, and come back and say, hey, let's, let's, oh, iron out some more details of this. Let's get in the nuts and bolts. Two things that's been brought, my intention is, is wait a minute, how can they look at this price? What we did was we looked at a long-term investment, a long-term partnership in Swan County. Gas prices are high to everybody right now. But will they always be that high? I don't see that. So if we can spread that cost out over years, you know, and add that franchise agreement, have that, that partnership over further years, that's what we're looking for. And the other thing is, is what we're going to do upon our cost. A good thing, also, attorney's not here today, but that's where the attorneys, that's where they make the money. They put that in those agreements and those contracts and say, hey, here, you got to have a cost of living, and here's the minimum. Here's what, or here's the max that they do. And so all that's covered in there. So we can't just go up and say, hey, we're going to do forty-five dollars a month now. Take everything we put right and check up to you and me.
So eighteen twenty-six and that's with you running the transfer station?
Yes. And running a site, you know, where they can bring in and drop it off.
Which I'm assuming would be where the landfill is now.
Well, we've worked out it. It's not more work, bless your God.
Yeah. Any Commissioners have any questions? I'm sure there's a bunch you just need to talk over here.
Well, again, I'd love to sit down, you know, and let's, let's iron it out and bring something back.
Well, you know, like I said in the beginning, we're not here to make a decision today. It's just trying to get everybody up to speed on where all the options are. And it's a lot of information, and there's a lot to go through, and we're just trying to get all this out of the budget schedule so we can hopefully get to a decision here at some point, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris, fluid.
I see your truck out now. So I did the, yes, yes, a smaller truck. You know, the garbage, the garbage doing it. So now what you're saying, if you're planning, kind of ride, we, this is where we'd be doing it from. Now, individuals that you're doing it for now, I see, I saw, you've got these cans, the props on your ladder. I don't know the individual, but I see them there. So how long have you been doing it locally here? Probably close to six months, and we have a truck over here every day delivering the parts. The big truck, that's the commercial truck. We do a good bit of commercial business over here, and the smaller truck, and that's another thing. We've gone to all commercially smaller trucks, a twelve-yard truck. That way they can, they don't tear your roads up as bad. They don't, you know, they're weightless. So anyway, we've, when we put this bid together, we put more trucks on the road, but a smaller truck. And more. Just say if I had some more, nice, old wire, metal tin, you kind of moved that also? Yes, sir. But it's eighteen twenty-six. Yes, sir. That's, and it depends on the, if we go to your house to pick up our plants, and this was just to put the bidding, putting it together, it'd be seventy-five dollars to pick it up. And so then we would, you know, work off that, all the yard debris, spaced off size. And we do a lot of yard debris now over here, we pick up for folks. So anyway, it just, it's based off of size over there.
How does the recyclables work? You've got a list in here, several recyclables of June first, twenty twenty-two.
So it depends on the market, to be honest with you. So if you look at, at cardboard, for instance, everybody's talking about cardboard. We would put that in a container, and we'd carry it to one of three locations, and then we'd turn around and sell it back to.
I'm just thinking more of the day-to-day trucks picking up the curbside.
Yeah, we couldn't afford to do that.
There's no recycle, that's what I'm getting at. There's nothing there on the curbside part of it.
Right.
This is just something they would bring in if they so choose to recycle.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because in Jefferson County, we see a lot of that. You know, they don't want to pay for, pay on recycling and all this, but they want to bring it down, drop it off.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis.
Oh, Mr. Hardy, this may be a different question, but I haven't read this contract or proposal word for word, the whole thing. In, in that rate? I don't see anywhere in here, so this is my question. That, does that include you disposing it? You dispose a part of it, is that just whole kit?
This is collection and disposal.
Okay. What I was trying to find, I didn't see it here.
This, this is pretty much what it looks like if we get out of the garbage business.
Right, right. And we're, Mr. Chairman, we're in the garbage business under two different departments. I'm looking at here. Disposal's a three-point-three million dollar annual budget, and collection is a three-point-six annual budget, so combined, talking seven million dollars. From two departments, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
Well, we're in a two-twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollar assessment now.
Right, right.
And you might want to go into that, Mr. Hardy. That's based on the county collecting the money for the assessments and paying you.
Yes, sir.
That's not you individually billing every customer. That's why this rate is what it is on the side.
Correct. And also, but on the individual, if somebody wanted an extra cash, they wanted valet, then we would, we would collect for them individually. So the county doesn't have to give them the collect and add.
The county's just covering the basic service. With the assessment. So he's a, his, his bid to turn in was two oh one twenty-four annually, and our assessment's at two twenty-five. Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
I think that, I will just emphasize, because I know all of you haven't had a chance to read this yet, but that option number two actually is an option where we enter into an agreement to let them operate the transfer station. That's something that we had not even contemplated previously. But I just want to point out, when you're reading through this thing and studying it, that really sets that option two apart. Just keep that in mind.
And you would take our employees and that's how that would work?
Yes. All full of them effect. And on the landfill side, just so y'all know, here recently, Ocelot turned away three of Hammer County trucks because they're not in agreement with it. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Appreciate it, Mr. Hardy.
I thank Mr. Hardy.
Thanks, sir. And now at this time, I'd like to get Mr. Dana to come up and give her side of the story. We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Dana Miller. I represent Waste Pro from four oh one Northwest Waldo Street in Lake City. Randy's a hard one to follow, I'll give him credit. I don't know what page numbers county administrators assigned to our proposal.
Well, we got the proposal on the back of the book here for you. It's Waste Pro, it says Waste Pro in the book.
The summary page is on page two, it's right behind the cover of the page, Commissioners.
Yes, page two.
Okay.
So just so you know what we're looking at.
Okay, yeah, that's what I had been telling you. So we submitted based on the RFP that y'all published, which, as you heard from my counterpart, left it wide open as to what could be bid on and could be suggested and alternates. We submitted based on one-time-a-week pickup. That is the more common service level that's provided in the industry. And you can see there, that two ninety-eight oh eight annually is twenty-four eighty-four and one, just to get that out of the way. We based that on disposing, yes, ours also includes disposal, as you asked. We based that on disposing at your current transfer station and the rates that are charged there. Just so you know where we came up with that. I agree with my counterpart. We, you'll see at the bottom of the summary that we would, at currently, we, based on the RFP, we would negotiate pricing for bulk and yard waste and appliance pickup with the customer correctly. If it was something that the county wanted to change and make curbside, then we would be willing to sit down to, to come up with pricing for curbside. But generally, as you said, Mr. Chairman, appliances go away on their own, and so does bulk a lot of times. The, a lot of, a lot of times rural counties understand, can be hesitant to go with a larger company like Waste Pro. Waste Pro started twenty years ago and is a Florida-based, American-owned company, privately owned still as well. Our headquarters are in Longwood, right at Center Linda, so we're right here in the state. We've made our reputation based on servicing smaller communities and smaller counties. Each location that services the municipalities in the area is fairly autonomous. We don't have a lot of bureaucracy and red tape. The example I give is that I have only one person between myself and the CEO, and I have his cell phone number in my phone. So I, if I need to get something done, it's, it's very easy for me to make happen. The benefit of having a company like ours, we're able to secure equipment at better rates because obviously of volume and that margin. We're able to provide, bring in supplemental services as if needed. A good example I give is several years ago, and I don't remember which year it was, when we had the hurricanes back to back to back. We were able to move equipment around across the state to provide service to other, to locations that were hit hard from the hurricanes and, and back up our local facility as needed, very quickly with personnel and equipment. We also, obviously, as you see, we have no problem with proper amount of insurance. I get asked that a lot for some reason, so I bring that up for your interest, yeah.
Again, as you want.
Yeah. And I'm open for questions. I mean, we've submitted based on what was asked in the RFP. We chose not to do multiple alternates because we really more wanted to find out, and this workshop's been very helpful, to find out more what the county was really more looking for and what direction. So a lot of the alternates that Randy brought up, I mean, if that's something that the county wants to see apples for apples on, we're certainly open to submitting that and, you know, and taking a look at it to see if it's financially viable for both Waste Pro and the county.
But just, just so everybody's clear, on the, on the bid, you're pretty much offering once a week the same as he did, correct?
Correct.
That's your two hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Correct. Yes, correct. And again, disposals included in that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to do the budget thing?
I'm just going to comment on the budget. Behind tab one, Commissioners, you have budget information, disposal and collection budget.
That's behind tab one.
Behind tab one, correct. If you will turn to the disposal, which is four oh three, disposal budget on revenue page, you will see that. Let me just go ahead and tell you that these budgets are not presented to you as if they are completed proposed budgets. You haven't had your budget workshops yet. You know that these numbers changed last year, even after we did a draft budget. I would anticipate they're going to change as we move forward, but the reason that we removed the budget that was in your back, it was because it was based on year-to-date for the seven-month period. And then I spoke to the finance department. We did an updated version of that using eight full completed periods, and then we redid it. If you'll recall, we did transfer in last year from general revenue. That has been left blank in this proposed document that you're looking at. The board will decide on that later, what you want to do. Clearly, if you want the assessment to stay the same as it is right now, then you have the opportunity to put money in there so that that will occur. So, like I said, I'm not interested in asking you to go through these two budgets right now. You'll have time to do that in your budget workshops. But you have information now that has been run through the finance department to get us to where we are. I will point out to you, though, something that's very important, and that's on your disposal expenses, which is the four oh three thirty-four twenty budget. If you look at the expenses, you can see where our projection was based on where we had been with our tonnages. I had told you last year that our tonnage was going up about two thousand tons per year, and that had been occurring for a few years. Well, clearly, our tonnage is down now. And I'm going to attribute that to the increase in the tipping fees, which was absolutely necessary. It had been so many years since the county had increased the tipping fees, done a study and increased those. So as a result of that, you're seeing the disposal expense going down, which is on line thirty-four hundred dash oh four. We had budgeted for two million dollars worth of disposal. And based on the projection, that projection is through the end of the current fiscal year, we're looking at a potential expense of just over one point four million. Big difference. And that's the result of less tonnage that we're handling. 1.4 million. Big difference. And that's the result of less tonnage that we're handling. Going forward, I'm confident that these collection site decals are also going to affect the amount of waste that we're taking in, because these people that have been traveling in here from neighboring counties using our collection sites won't be allowed to use those any longer. I think you're going to see a reduction in your volumes there. In this particular case, I think time is on our side as we continue to realize the reductions and get a better handle, maybe over the next year even. Clearly, I think we're going to see an effect over the next three to six months. But then I think over the next year, we've got the potential to see another reduction. So the $2 million number that was used as a request number on that particular line is a number that the chairman and I spoke about yesterday, trying to forecast where we're going to be with inflation, with fuel, with the volume of waste, primarily the volume. We don't have a handle yet on the volume because we don't know how it will continue to be affected by these collection site permits. But the encouraging side of this is that we've already reduced the volume that we're taking in and having to dispose of. So, like I said, this isn't presented to you as a completed document, but it's a working document that you can use for now based on an eight-month, eight-month timeframe that Nina and I have discussed.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lee.
Question. On the solid waste disposal budget, somebody's note here on the front page says short $423,734. But that's, that's based on the requested calculations?
That's based on the requested, but it also, if you'll look at the third lineup, you're on the revenue page.
Yeah, I'm on the revenue page.
So look at the third lineup. You can see we left that blank as well.
Which one?
Third lineup from the bottom says transfer in general fund.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
Yeah, last year we put $500,000 in. The way this has been prepared, nothing has been put in from the general fund. So, yes, it says 423734 short. There are a number of things that can be done to affect that number. One, we can cut something out of the budget. Two, you can transfer in. You can do a combination of the two. But in any event, that's why I said I don't have any reason to believe that the assessment needs to be affected at all.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think that, I mean, I read, I looked at that briefing like, whoa, we're 400, we're going to be 400,000 short. But then I look up and I see that the transfer.
Yeah, we left that, we left that zero.
And then the 290,000, 289, 420 contingencies out of that too. So you include them two, and we're good at 225 if you add those in. So my first thought, I'm like, oh my God.
Yeah, I'm going to try. Yeah, this was not a completed document.
We're not that far off.
No.
Well, and you're hoping that these garbage containers and tonnage. That's going to hold us where we're at now.
And see, like I said, that, that $2 million expense, if we're, maybe it's prudent to leave that $2 million in there. My original number was one and a half million, because I'm believing that the volume is continuing to drop some. But having said that, the safe thing to do would probably be to go in there with 2 million, and a year from now, we'll know for sure. If we only spend a million and a half, we're way ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Harris on that. I would say leave it at the two, and the 225 should still be a solid number for next year. And with hopes that, number one, our tonnage goes down because of, well, the commercial cam business and the stickers. I mean, I think we've all got a lot, a little bit of pushback, but once we explain to the public on why we did the stickers, and now that you can see that our tonnage immediately has started to fall off and that, that affected data, but stickers haven't even got here. The people are reading the signs, and we went up on the tip and increased our tipping fees to a more realistic number compared to what our disposal was of that particular garbage. So, I mean, we kind of got ahead of some of that, and it's helped us here.
Well, just for instance, I was at the town hall making breakfast last night, and they asked me, well, what are we going to do with our refrigerators and stuff? And so they've been taking on there, you know. I mean, Waste Pro services them on a daily basis, but, you know, they do the county site with theirs. So, you know, I get it. I'd have been doing the same thing, but that just shows you where, I'm sure these numbers, these tonnage numbers, they're going to get rolled back pretty significantly. That's good. Yeah. That was a good addition. That's where I started.
Well, another thing, too, and I don't want anyone to construe this as criticism, but we know that a lot of residents in the city of Lightfoot are using our collection sites. Now, they pay the city. They handle their waste. But there are lots of people that have just historically used the collection sites that are not paying the county assessment.
Well, it's disconvenient for them.
Yeah, it's convenient, but it's the county residents, the households in the county that pay for the operation of those collection sites. So we've actually had, I don't know how many, but we've had some people from the city call and ask how they can pay one of those decals.
Well, just while we're on this, and they did ask me that last night, and I just, I'm not sure I answered them correctly when I was down there. But can they go to the landfill and dispose and pay the fee at the landfill for their white goods or any of that?
Oh, to the landfill?
To the landfill.
Yes.
To the collection site.
Yes, not the collection sites, but to the landfill.
To the landfill itself.
Yeah, everything that goes into landfill goes across the scale.
Well, that's kind of what I informed myself. Well, you know, you can take it to the landfill and pay, pay your.
Right, that's right.
And then, well, another question that was asked of me was, could they pay the $225 a year and still go to the collection site?
Yes, that's what we're doing with city residents right now. So if they want to buy a decal and use the collection sites, they have that ability.
So they can pay the assessment and still continue.
That's correct. They would, they would pay the same thing to the county resident.
Is that how I answered it last night, Greg?
Yes, pretty much.
Like, long day yesterday. With that being said, is there anything else on the garbage right now? I mean, we've still got, got this to deal with in the future, but this is kind of all informational.
Well, I think this budget, even though it isn't complete, it gives you an idea of the effect that is coming out as a result of a decision that we had to make last year. And this, these are the types of things that have to occur in order for us to keep the costs down for the Swan County residents. And they're working, and I think they'll continue to work. So that's all I have on the solid waste for now. Mr. Chairman, we'll, I'm sure, have more discussion when we get into the budget workshop on what we do with...
Well, I'm going to just throw something out there for y'all to be thinking about as we go forward. I don't, I don't see the need to raise an assessment this coming year, but I do think we need to start looking at a per-year increase of a little bit, you know, even a CPI index. I don't know how you determine that, but so at some point, we don't get caught in the same trap we were before. And we've heard from the landfill deal, but that's pretty much, at this point, not doable. So it's just something to throw out there for you guys to be thinking about when we get to this budget cycle. I mean, I don't want to go up on them again this year because we had to go so high last year, but at some point, I think you're going to have to put a cost, some kind of cost there to get ahead of it so you're not in the same position you are now.
Yeah, I would agree with that 100%. I think the 225, we need to stay there and see how this tonnage shakes out and see what happens with that over the next 12 months or so. But, you know, one of the biggest complaints when we did go to the 225 that I heard from the public was, wow, so much, so short. It is at one time, if, if, if we could do something, I don't know what the number is, $5 a year, $10 a year, something type of index, I don't know, so that we don't have that, that big kick in the gut, you know, getting to where we need to be so that, you know, future boards don't have that stare looking down the barrel of oil. I'd do something with my tractor and disposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Christian Doug. I would, I would say, I would be of agreement with that. I would say a good, probably a good time to start, that would be the 240-year collection site.
I'm doing it.
Honestly, we hold it for a couple more years.
But honestly, without jokingly being said, I think we don't know for another year until we see how all this really affects, you know, the efforts we made and what effects it takes place.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not saying we got to do it. I'm just saying we need to start thinking.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
I think it needs to be done. I mean, I'll be the first to say that this commission took it on the chin, because for years, this could have been done going way back, you know, 15 years ago or more.
Well, there's a lot of factors that go into that. We had a great deal. I mean, it was cheap, super.
That's right.
So I kind of understand where the previous commission came from, but I don't want to be the commission that left here and left it for somebody else to deal with again.
Right.
That's, we don't have to belabor the point. It's just up for discussion.
I agree with that, Chairman. We got a solid plan in place moving all of us in here or whatever. It would be up to the board to change that. At least we have one, that was doable and not shell-shocked.
So Commissioners, you've got a lot of information. If you have questions about any thing that we've provided, feel free to give me a call. I've been through these numbers a million times, and I don't mind going through them again. But at the very least, we know we'll be discussing the budget with the budget workshops. And you'll, you'll be asked to make a, I think we've got to set the assessments for fire and solid waste in the next, what's the next meeting? 21st, in order for us to hit the calendar benchmarks that we need to hit. So we'll be bringing that back to you on a regular.
June or July 21st?
June.
June.
Mr. Greg, I don't know if you can put waste management. I want to grab this here, sir.
Greg Huntington with Waste Management, 6501 Braydon Road, Jacksonville, Florida, 32258. Forgive me, y'all are coming to the end of this discussion, but I've been given the opportunity to necessarily speak when y'all spoke on the transportation and disposal contract that you have with our company. First, I want to say thank you for allowing us to provide these critical environmental services to your county. The transportation disposal contract is, it's got two components. It's got the transportation and then obviously the disposal. What we do with the disposal is a five-year deal. It's fixed over the life of the five years with, I think, 3% increments in there. Although, we did work with Mr. Harris in year one to bring it down in order to work within your fiscal budget, and then we recoup some of that from year 235. The transportation is a cost-plus bond. So whatever your costs are on a monthly basis, based on our subcontractor costs with no markup, this is what you're going to pay, plus our management fee of 20%. So the starting rate of 2742 that was in the contract, we just had to have that in there as a starting point. It actually came in lower, lower than the 2742. Now, going forward, who knows what that's going to look like. And Mr. Harris did ask me, he goes, can we have a 90-day out? I said, you can have a 30-day out if you want to get into the transportation business. But I don't think you're going to find the same leverage that we have with our subcontractor CEI. So I just wanted, for clarity's sake, that y'all understood those details of that contract.
So the 27 something ton that we're paying, or the maximum, is that a maximum amount that y'all had in the contract to charge for transportation?
No, it was not. It was, if you read the contract, it was just the initial rate that we had to put something in the contract as a starting point. But actually, the cost came in lower for that first invoice. So that 21, yeah, change. So every month, it's, it may go up or down. Whatever your costs are, are your costs. It's a pass-through, plus our management fee on top of it.
And I'm sure you're just running off fuel surcharge, just like pretty much everybody, or your contractors are that's hauling it for you.
I couldn't speak to the exact contractual agreements that we have with CEI. I do know we utilize them across 13 states, so we have a great deal of leverage with them as compared to somebody trying to utilize them as an independent contractor by themselves.
Well, Mr. Harris, I don't know if you've seen the breakdown he gave us on this, but he was figuring it, what you are charging now, and then based on the higher rate, he's got the numbers in there for that as well. So, I mean, it's pretty much an apples-to-apples comparison as far as I can tell. I hadn't really dug into it a whole lot yet, but...
One other aspect of that contract in Section 8, it does say that the waste that's generated within your county, to the extent the law permits, must be disposed of at the county transfer stations. So I think that you need to factor that into your thought process.
Yeah.
And then the disposal agreement is with us. So for the next five years, it's going to be going to Chester Island.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, anybody?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Does that finish up us on the solid waste?
Yes, sir.
Let's move along to discuss economic development and job creation, as I don't know before. I don't think there really is anywhere on it. That's just me. I think we need to discuss what our priorities are as far as, we've been talking about the grants, this, that, and the other. We need to come up with a, with a plan, and I just wanted to bring it up while we had this workshop for a few minutes, because all the listeners here can talk. So just wanted to get your, your guys' ideas on where you thought we needed to head with, with this economic development, such as infrastructure, roads. What, where do we need to be looking at? What's our top priority? Where are we headed for here?
Can I throw some ideas out real quick? Because a lot of these are ones that we've had conversations with, not only recently, Mr. Chairman, but some of them for many years. One would be the catalyst site, expanding the water system out there to get water back from the catalyst site water plant to this side of I-10, and then construct sewer treatment facility and extend the collection lines, not only onto the collection site, catalyst site, but back to this side of I-10 as well. That, we've got engineers' estimates and probable costs. We broke that down into four components, recognizing that there won't be a single grant that can pay all of that cost. So that's one thing that we've already been moving on, taking some action on. We've actually applied for a grant for the water transmission component of that. I think that needs to be in our capital improvement plan. The roadway, we reconstructed 169th, but depending on how properties develop along 169th and in that immediate vicinity, we may need to take a close look at widening 169th. I know it's in a tough location because of the railroad track, but if we were to end up with a large volume increase of trucks out there, we would probably need right and left-hand turn lanes and probably a little four-lane section there to use a better traffic light in. That would have to be coordinated with DOT. But the road network is a very important piece of the infrastructure in that immediate area. When you come back this side of I-10 on 90, I think because of some of the properties that are out there that we're all aware of, very likely the, just this side of I-10, we're going to need to look at four-laning a section there and extend that on back to the east, back toward town a little bit, exactly like we did on the other side of I-10. When we did that, DOT provided the funding, but they told us at the time that they felt like we could get the job designed and bid and constructed faster than they can. So they gave us the funding, and we did it. I would anticipate going back to them if the board agrees that that needs to be in the capital improvement plan and visit them about that same type scenario on this side of I-10. We also spoke about County Road 137, its relationship to I-10 out there. We know that there's a customer coming in just north of I-10. So very likely, County Road 137 is going to need improvements in widening to handle truck traffic. At some point, if that interchange were to really develop... At some point, um, if that interchange were to really develop, then that interchange in I-ten and, uh, one-thirty-seven very likely would need to be four-lanked sometime. It may be ten years out, but I can tell you it is, it's never too early to start having the conversations with DOT. And you could experience the same thing out there at, uh, one-thirty-six and I-seventy-five, same type thing. Um, so when it comes to road improvements and their relationship to economic development, there are some serious considerations there that we could, uh, consider putting in our capital improvement plan. Uh, we have, believe it or not, continued to have conversations with DOT about, um, using our utilities to handle those rest areas, um, out there on I-ten. We know that's gonna be an enormous expense and, and upgrade our facilities if it happens, but, uh, they know that we don't have the money to make it happen. But they haven't shut off the conversation yet, so it's gonna be interesting to see how that continues. Um, and I just share that with you because that's, that's still an ongoing conversation. If the utilities out there that we have are going to provide the service, they will have to be upgraded, particularly the wastewater treatment plant. When that's constructed, um, it would have to be constructed with at least an additional twenty-five percent capacity. That would be a requirement. And that would be a good thing if they want to come up with funding for that and we have the additional twenty-five percent capacity over the total waste that's going into it each day. Uh, so that's just a possibility. But, um, in any event, we, I want to share with you that we had a very good conversation, the chairman and I, Mr. Norris, uh, met with representatives of the city of Livo last week, uh, Mr. Curtis and the mayor and councilman, Alan. And we talked, uh, briefly about some utilities and their capacity and their inability to, um, expand their infrastructure to accommodate any additional economic development. And I think the parties agreed that it's advantageous to both the city and the county to try to work together on some of these things. And I'm gonna tell you, from the years I've been here, that's probably the most encouraging meeting that I've participated in, uh, with the city when it came to, uh, their utilities. They've got tremendous need. Um, I think most of you Commissioners may be aware, we've got customers that, uh, potential customers that Mr. Norris has been talking to that have already, uh, caused us to start taking a close look quickly at utilities. So I've made some calls about some potential sources of revenue to help out. Um, and there's some pockets around the city that I believe will be good targeted areas for potential infrastructure agreements. We can find the funding to help expand some of those services and we can identify those, some of those areas in a capital improvement plan as well. Um, we talked about some of those in that meeting the other day. Um, so I share that with you as information. Uh, our plan is to bring back the capital improvement plan soon. We'll list all of these things and anything additional that the Commissioners, if any of you individually want to share with me, if you, if you don't have thoughts on it right now, we can get it all on the list where we can talk about it. Um, because there'll be a process to get it adopted and put in our capital improvement plan, uh, in the comp plan.
Sportsplex?
Pardon me?
The sportsplex, the max out of that, could that be included, that, the?
The expansion.
Yeah.
The sportsplex, we can put that in the capital improvement plan as well. Sure.
I think Mr. Scott was gonna bring that, he spoke for that, things were on me.
We got the list.
Yeah. Mr. Norris, anything that you want to add to this conversation?
Sure.
Your economic development, yeah.
Yeah. While he's coming up, let me just comment briefly, Mr. Chairman, because this, we've had some fragmented conversation about this, that stormwater. Um, Commissioners, so that you know, in case you're asked, right now, the, uh, stormwater retention that we have out there at the catalyst site is all spoken for.
If you can believe it.
Um, believe it or not. And I know those are enormous stormwater ponds out there, but based on the calculations and that were in the permit, it's all dedicated to what was gonna go on at that time with Foster because in their initial plan, they were supposed to make all of that area to the south of the plant improve use. So those ponds were all sized based on that ultimately in the plan. I, I never would have believed it, but I've asked them on three occasions and they've gone back and checked and said it's just the way that it is. So the only other thing going in those ponds right now is the, uh, water off of the rail spur. We put a drain in there and we were allowed to tie that back into that pond on the south end. Um, so I, I don't know that we're gonna get into enormous conversations with, uh, customers, businesses about stormwater, but we do not have a stormwater, uh, utility. And the only stormwater that we have offered in the past was that that was associated with the salt hell out there.
If, we've been pushing for a change with water management, a rule change on stormwater. If that change was to become effective where we don't need as much, would that change the calculations on what's already there?
I don't know that it will. And I say it because of this. Those rules were in place back then. And I'm of the opinion today that a part of what, um, businesses are dealing with in their applications of water management has more to do with interpretation, um, than it does to do with the actual rule itself. So I don't think that, and it's just my opinion, I'm not an engineer, but I don't have any reason to believe at this point that it's gonna make any difference, um, with those who take their ponds out there.
Well, just real quick, before we fast, Mr. Um, talking to catalyst site, those retention ponds, any of the additional properties there that we have versions for, that possibly versions in the future? We can use some of that to create other storm drainage areas or is the way it was originally drawn up, is that all we can do out there?
No, we could, we could permit more. Now, ideally, you want the businesses to permit their own retention and keep it on site. But we have the ability, if we wanted to provide more stormwater retention, we certainly could do that. We just have to get a permit.
Would you, when I would go, like you said, when those changes come, more than that part, then we go back at that part? More new water? Sorry. Might block the mass for stormwater?
Yeah. My three cents, though.
Go ahead, Mr. Norris.
No, I completely agree with, you know, we've all been in discussions about all the stuff that we're doing out there. Um, the catalyst site, there's a lot of potential right now. Waste water being the number one thing that's always back. You know, you guys heard me say it, we got, I've got a brand-new vehicle, but I've got three tires on it. So I need four tires. Uh, we've got numerous projects, and I say numerous, more than two, more than three that we're working with, that possibly could locate out there. We just did the developers' agreement with Project Shard. And, uh, so the wastewater, for me, the water lines and the machines are working hard on finding money on that. We've been talking with Mike, he's been helping us. But the water and wastewater out there, to me, is top of the list because we have projects sitting and waiting for that.
Tended to, no?
Yes, absolutely. Um, the, the, the road, one-sixty-ninth, uh, just met with the railroad yesterday out there. That is something that, uh, absolutely we're gonna have to start considering. Um, they were there to meet with me by looking at another project that possibly may be coming in, but then another rail spur. But they were looking at the crossing on one-sixty-ninth and, and they say it's taking in water, water from the truck traffic that's coming in. So they have been meeting with Bender Holtz as well, and Bender Holtz is looking in, putting in their own spur. But Bender Holtz is starting the new logline, uh, in August, and they're gonna be putting that in. When that goes in, uh, with, with our meetings with, with Bender Holtz, uh, they're up over two-hundred trucks a day. They were, I think, a high two-thirty a couple weeks ago. They anticipate that would double. So if you think about that road and you think about that crossing, then we're gonna be doubling. And not only that, we're working with other companies that may be locating on that same corridor. That road probably should be looked at, and that crossing should be looked at. One thing that we haven't spoken of that hasn't been brought to my attention is, of course, we've got one-seventy-fifth in, which is the brand-new road, and the brand-new crossing and MACO, you know, is running hit struts in and out of there. But when Project Shard gets up and running, they're gonna be shipping out there a day with their tankers, um, running out, you know, truck after truck after truck. So there's not any turn lanes there. You know, I know that was something that was told not a long time ago and the funding wasn't there, but we're gonna have lots of my trucks that are gonna get stopped on ninety, having to turn and make that crossing. So that may be, as we're looking at that interchange, that area, that may be something that we should consider. Um, so stormwater, I know we, we, that's a big problem. Um, and I know we've talked about some, maybe some positive ideas on getting west side of one-seventy-fifth possible. And then the other property that the canyon side is still in timber. Um, you know, a beautiful way to take and get that ready to go. But I don't know if that needs to be in the capital improvement plan.
No, but I would, that is a good idea. And I've thought about it several times and, and I would like the county to look at harvesting that timber on the, the west side and go ahead and pay in development authority property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did, uh, did, did we do an extension? Did we do an extension going west on the four lane and the four lane didn't go up, go up the tunnel?
We did. Um, in fact, I'll just tell you, that's the section I was speaking of earlier that DOT asked us to go ahead and four-lane. And we completed the project, but years ago, when that was underway, I went to DOT, uh, DOT and told them, I said, listen, we're gonna be, um, paving one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth. They knew that. And I said, why don't we go ahead and extend this four-lane down beyond one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth now? So they agreed to pay the cost of the design work, which they did. And we did have it designed and we bid it as an alternate at the time. And DOT didn't have the money to pay that difference to get it on down, to extend the four-lane farther to the west on, beyond one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth. So that part was designed if we did, but funding wasn't there.
Will we still use that design if we was?
Could be able to, yeah.
So that's kind of it, catalyst site, when we're speaking of catalyst site. But the other projects, of course, um, Mr. Curtis, like Mr. Harris was saying, we had a great lead with him the other day. And we know we've got some projects out in the north of town and, and, um, they're real. And, but they are contingent upon some infrastructure improvements. And so that, that-
Those we are working on.
We, we are working on and, and that is, uh, super time-sensitive. Um, and, uh, the fact that we can work together with the city will help both entities, uh, because it will lead to numerous others following. So, uh, great project, real project, uh, hoping break round in, uh, January. So, uh-
Well, even, even the infrastructure, even past that going north on one-twenty-
Right, the whole area.
I'm sure you had that on the map, the catalyst.
I actually have it written down here. I didn't mention that right now, but yeah. We know that we're, I'm anticipating this development straight across from Busy Bee to come in any time now. Um, this is a company we've been dealing with for quite some time that we initially started the conversations over that, uh, driveway. They weren't putting straight across from Busy Bee. Um, they weren't interested at that time in being developers. But I told them that, and DOT agreed with me, that they wouldn't let them just go in there and drop driveways all across the front of that property, that they had to be treated as a developer. So they went ahead ultimately and hired, uh, an engineering firm to work with them. Uh, they've contacted me. They're working on their plans. I haven't seen any of them yet. But they're gonna need the infrastructure. They're gonna need water and sewer. Um, we've talked for years, um, about trying to get water and sewer out to Music Park. Um, and then that would service everything in between. So, yes, that will be on the capital improvement plan as well.
And just, this particular project, we're talking about Blue Station Project River, you know, the fact that, I think Commissioners statement about that, uh, we, we had worked on some of the other projects years ago, um, but they needed that road paved. It's the road that goes back to the old back colored building back there where International Walsh is.
Sixty-eighth Terrace.
Sixty-eighth Terrace, right, right. So, so that road, um, was kind of holding us back from bringing the project. And well, now this new project is sitting there looking at it. When I met with them, that was, they had basically three things that they needed. That road being paved and, uh, all the two standards was one of them. Well, we've already agreed that that's, I think he's pretty much at the top of our list. So us jumping in front of that a hundred percent helped us get this project in, because that was one they're asked. Um, the other, of course, is working with the city on that Blue Station and, and, and we're, we're gonna make that happen. I mean, I, I just told them we're gonna make it happen and everybody is on board with that. So, so it's a great project there and that whole area is growing, as Mr. Harris said. It's, it's just, it's coming, it's coming. And then out where the water and interchange completely agree, also there, Mr. Um, Lane, uh, that you and I spoke with, uh, you know, he, he was one of the guys that's a big, um, site selector, works for a lot of companies. We met with him when we were down at somewhere.
It wasn't a conference.
Yeah, something. Anyway, um, he, he, he came to town and actually helped us look at some things and identified where we may be lacking. And so, uh, he, he liked that area. And I, I'll, obviously the fact that we're running utilities out there, absolutely. He said that's what we need to do. But the road is still holding us back because these companies aren't gonna come in. If you think distribution or manufacturing or anything else, we got not even a shoulder road, just a, a two-lane road there. So that's definitely something he said we needed to put on our radar. If we expected to grow that interchange out there and bring business in, um, we need to be making plans to improve that route. So there's lots of opportunities, but I, you know, pretty much agree. And I think you guys already been involved at one time or another with some of these projects. And we all hear the ask, but we're real close, um, on a lot of these things. Yes?
I just was sitting here thinking, Mr. Chairman, I know some of the things we're real close on, when you've been working with those folks on the deadline of other properties outside of our catalyst site there. And I think some of those properties are gonna be spoken for real soon. I know this sounds crazy, but I think we should. I was gonna share with you, and there's not much left at the catalyst site. We'd probably be looking for another site real soon.
Well, we-
Or at least this company, uh, helping identify some more of these properties.
Yeah, yeah, yes, absolutely. And I commend you all, because I know it's not easy to go out and purchase property, especially when all these guys are looking at, why are you purchasing property? And I'm hollering, I'm fixing to get rid of all your property. But we know, um, Project Shard, um, the piece of property that they're going on, I gotta call them next week to do a business on one side of this property. Okay?
It's under it.
It's under it, right. So they wanted to go there, why? Because they had rail, it's a great piece of property, but now that property's tied up. Right? So now we're working with that exact company to try to find them another location, but they didn't rail. So, yeah, we do need to look towards the future. And I, the property that we have acquired is gonna be important and, and other properties that are contiguous to the site, I think, will be very important. But we absolutely need to think in the past when we're here and, you know, five years down the road, ten years down the road, because as you see certain people coming in and divesting properties and cut it all up to a bunch of old tracks, you just can't get that back. And we'll never get an opportunity to develop those properties again. And, um, you know, nothing against our friends at the energy companies, but, you know, there's certain properties that can be developed. Uh, we would much rather see them developed for manufacturing and transportation logistics types things than, you know, maybe a solar farm. In the right situation, the solar farm's fine. But I don't wanna see a takeaway developing the property in prime locations because that's gonna be beneficial to us then. You know, solar farm, yes. It, it would be great thinking down the road and stockpiling, uh, because I, I'm telling you guys, man, it's, it's really coming. I mean, we know, we're just the phone this, um, last night received an email, just a few, a while ago from a company we've been talking with. And they emailed last night and they said, we've decided for the company. And they emailed last night and they said, we've decided for coming. So they want to be in July and they need a place.
It's true.
So I know, and I know we can't do it all. Okay, I know that. But we're really close and as we put in this infrastructure. And the more the word gets out, the more phone calls we receive, the more emails we receive and so forth. And especially with national companies. I had one developer tell me that, and this is more of a retail side and a food side, but they just look at publics. They don't even do their own research anymore. And if publics decides to go there, they know that's a good spot. So there's other companies that follow like that. So when they start, when we start getting on the map and they see these companies located, then they know that that's a good spot. So I think people start to figure out we're a good spot.
It gets fast and furious, is what happens.
And I know folks out here, I'm just thinking to everyone, I don't think you have any idea of the time that I grabbed from these guys. Everyone they're involved in, some of them are on some projects and some of them are on others. Unfortunately, the chairman typically, most things run through him as well, but there's probably not a day. I mean, sometimes it's three, four, five hours multiple times a week. You know, and of course, Mr. Harris and other staff as well, families on, doing the partner, all those guys have to jump in too, kind of something.
Honestly, it's real exciting and it's even since I've been involved in it, it's really taken off and it's a handful. It's a lot of work and you've got to really be looking forward pretty good ways.
You do. We anticipate a company flying in next week and they want to have a meeting with, of course, you know, Mr. Harris. And then I think that's the project that Mr. Lane started out with us on. And no, Mr. Harris, getting a fix up, see? We get some things going on. That was that project. So they want to meet with staff and they want to meet with all the powers that be and the railroad and everybody. And they want us all in the same room at the same time. Takes up time. We'll spend the day with them. So, but I can't thank you enough because I know it's hard to look at the future, but that funding comes back tenfold. You know, whenever they start paying those taxes and the money starts coming in and the jobs that are created. And then it multiplies four, five times back through the community. And that's how we take the burden off of these guys. That's how we take the burden off all these assessments and things. We've put it on the back of the business community of them. So we can lower that bill rate, help the citizens here, as I'm preaching.
And the assignment, or again, say, what these companies are, what they do, though, is what they are and what they do. That's the deciding part. I can't wait for them to be able to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to have to move this law or somebody's going to shoot me. Y'all want to take a five minute deal here for a registration right before we finish this last thing, or do you want to?
I'm good.
We just got one more thing, the minimum wage compression discussion.
The discussion, the parks?
Oh, the parks, yeah.
Which one do you want to do first?
Let's just do the parks thing. I don't think that's going to take a lot of time here.
Okay. We've got a massive number of people trying to pound in parks if those parks aren't big enough to manage. And I think Greg might agree with me that we can love those parks to death and just run them in the ground. And then we've got issues with some people being unruly, a lot of people bringing large numbers of dogs in there and making a mess. And we've had some conversations about this and looked at ordinance that we have. Greg, why don't you just fill in some blanks there? It's you and your staff that are dealing with it.
Yeah, we're dealing head on. Wisconsin Springs is on the list today, but anyway, some of the springs are the main areas of concern. We had a meeting yesterday with the state attorney, county attorneys there. Sheriff's office area was there. Our staff talked about what we can do. We've got people that usually we find historically that are local residents fairly don't respect what's going on. Sometimes our local tourists will come in and visit and maybe do some other things. We have a game planned together to work on the ordinance piece and enforcement, bring some examples. Chairman was there also yesterday. But
Sinage.
Sinage. And then working toward some sort of attendant system. Possibly discuss in the budget workshops on whether we have fees. If we do fees, I always see a resident, a non-resident rate, unless it's already paid. A lot of that's, and we have the non-residents probably, not the extreme numbers, but just having a presence there will make a difference in attitudes. The sheriff's got, got his station down there now and is making some changes already. I think we got a good handle on it, the board. Several discussions over the past couple of weeks with the sheriff. He's taking it very serious and doing some things to make it, to just get a compliance. The biggest thing is people love it with things that we don't need luck to have it, love it with, you know, alcohol and dogs and it used to be the biggest thing for us back in the day was who found the biggest diaper, the heavy diaper. But it's amazing how you can have a trash can right there and a diaper just big silent, but you can't fix some stuff. But, you know, we've got issues, we're working through those with law enforcement and area and other citation issue. We'll be coming back and talking about moving forward. Do we want to charge fees and what that looks like? Attendants and what that couple of costs. Try to do it as non-intrusive as we can. But we probably want to be a state park, but you know, like over Springs, there's a design for that at some point in that way. And we have a property to do that if we wanted to grow it into something different, but that's another opportunity. But anyway, that's the overview of it. Question, do I answer any questions or Mr. Harris may want to have comments or things he's heard, but?
I got one.
Who's one?
Royal Springs in my district has this, Charles and a couple others. I've heard multiple complaints from locals, especially when it comes to like the, I mean, a lot of our locals like to go fishing at those rivers. And Royal Springs has a boat ramp. And I've talked to different staff members, not you specifically yet, but yesterday I did speak to some of them. But it's my understanding that like, for instance, on the boat ramp, there's boat trailer parking or truck parking for the users of the ramp. But many times those are spaces are consumed by passenger cars from outside the area, wherever they may be from, maybe from in the area. A lot of times they're outside the area. But it's my understanding that even with the silents there saying, hey, this is boat trailer parking, they still park there. And, but what I understand, understood from the sheriff's department, we don't really have an ordinance that gives them the authority to enforce riding a ticket for violating. There's signs there saying, hey, this is a boat trailer for whatever. But there's no ordinance that, I haven't talked with Mr. Pat, he's not here today, but there's no ordinance that gives him the authority to write a citation or a warning or something for parking in the boat trailer parking lot. So our locals come down there and put their boat in and they're having to drive down the edge of the county road to park and, you know, a lot of these folks are elderly. And it's hot and they're having a walk, two, three hundred dollars to get back to their boat.
Just want to say that they have a
Yeah, you got a boat trailer hanging out the edge of the road and they're having a walk and just, I don't know, we, you know, I don't like any more government than we kind of have, but if we have to pass some type of ordinance, Mr. Harris or something, that gives the sheriff's department the authority to write a citation if they park in a spot that says boat trailer and they're a Honda Civic. Hey, you're supposed to park over there, that only is Honda Civic.
And part of that too is that this part has done, the parking spots for other people get filled up. So they all just cut through the woods and, but we've had that issue for a while and really need to address it. Thing we're finding, it used to seem like law enforcement, they have a little conversation or something, they're using a note or whatever, and that caused a reaction. Now legalities and things, they're trying to cover their self, making sure that if they do something, they've got the back of baby. And it's even more than just the ordinance, it's the process of the ordinance. And again, that guest room thing, it's like layers, you didn't think you had, that there's more layers there than what you should have.
Like profanity for what it was like, where you violating their working women rights. To tell them that they can curse. So that's the kind of issue you can start facing there. And you go down, but I've got a copy of the ordinance, which is obviously
Think about tickets on them?
Well, I don't know about the parking. I was, well, I was just reading through. I don't see anything on the parking, but they pretty much covered everything.
And I'll hold a juvenile, Mr. Brad, on the parking issues.
Yeah, can we get a copy?
Just for a copy.
Do that if you don't mind, Lawrence.
There's a copy of that where it's, and there's the regular list, too, so we can copy that. It is a real, real issue.
Yeah, I mean, I just want, sorry, so I can try to keep those, you know, those springs are valuable to our community and it's kind of what we're on for. Whatever we got to do to try to keep those as family friendly as possible and
Well, kind of the discussion we had yesterday, the sheriff's going to pick up a place on the enforcement that finds, the patrolling and going forward from there, like Mr. Scott talked about, we need to really visit that in a budget before we start looking at the budget. Is putting somebody there and attendance at all times. And then at that point, I think you can start limiting how many people you let in the park at one time. But up until that point, I don't see how you really enforce that right now until you get an attendant there. But that, that is my way of thinking was where we're kind of headed to with this whole, whole parks thing.
Right. And we offered, you know, to like the holiday weekends things, help try to offset some of those pocket costs. And we got some, especially that money that's up in the line that probably happened to, you know, this is, usually use resource officers in the summer to address this. They can't take vacation during the school year, so we're seeing them vacation out. We've got Officer Cena down, working heavy now. Again, there's, we hope to, at some point, we'll have to have a conversation about park rangers. Hopefully not here within, but that's a reality that will base to some point. But anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. I just want to let the public know where we're working on.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all. For that, we just got minimum wage, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, before I cover that, I want to point something out to you. On that solid wage discussion with the numbers that you have on New River, I told you that there was a formula that was in their agreement, proposed agreement, that used the CPI from year to year. Clearly, we don't have the CPI index going forward. So what I did is I went back and I used the last four years and then I had to write an estimate to follow in the fifth year. So that's what was included in there. That's how I derived the numbers that are in there on New River.
So the New River does include the CPI.
As the CPI built into it, it was predicated on prior four years and where we are year to date in the current year. So it'll be pretty close. In any event, on the minimum wage, I ran a lot of information for you and we haven't had discussion on what board actually wants to do. So I'm providing information to you on this compression issue. The minimum wage mandate was just that, bring the minimum wage up. I've had some people ask me, well, does that mean that all employees everywhere are supposed to get raised? Well, that isn't what the mandate said. And I guess the question when it comes to compression is left to local governing bodies to make a determination. But in any event, on the first page behind the cover, you've got a schedule and Mr. Gentry provided the estimates on all of this. It was primarily he and I that worked together on trying to come up with these scenarios. But you've got on that first schedule, the minimum wage, it'll be fully implemented in the 26, 27 budget, fifteen dollars an hour. So it's essentially going up a dollar a year between now and then. Current minimum wage is ten dollars. So you've got your cost estimates listed by year with the minimum wage and without on that first page. And you can see the dollar differences each year with and without the minimum wage. On your second page, you've got a schedule that just shows solid waste because a lot of your minimum wage people would be in solid waste. So it shows just the effect on the solid waste budget going forward. And again, that was programmed out from the current year through year 26, 27. The next page, you have a history of the past five years of ad lorum revenue increases. And then you've got a schedule there of a forecast or estimate on the next five years ad lorum revenue growth. The next page, titled Impact of Typical Annual Salary Increases on Compression. I'm just going to read through this for the public's benefit. Commissioners, you have it in your back. The new mandate will increase the current ten dollar an hour wage by a dollar per year for five years until it reaches fifteen dollars an hour 26, 27 fiscal year. The county's existing practice of giving annual pay increases already helps mitigate some of the effects of wage compression. For many years, employees have received an annual 1% longevity increase plus 50 cents per hour, which has been implemented with beginning of each fiscal year. An illustration as a result of existing annual increases, an employee who currently makes 12 dollars and 50 cents an hour will be making 15 oh three per hour in the 25, 26 budget year. All other employees will also continue to experience annual increases, which will keep them above the minimum wage rate. Although existing practices are impacting compression, board may want to decide on the level at which compression should be mitigated. For example, the mitigation adjustments need to be applied to all employees or only those who fall within a specified pay range immediately above the minimum wage level. So I posed two questions. Does the board want to consider uniform pay increases for all employees or limited mitigation to a targeted group based on pay range? And you may have some other ideas on this. I'm certainly not submitting this as an all inclusive option list. The next page, the minimum wage mandate again will be fully implemented in the year 26, 27 budget year. So I ran some scenarios on uniform salary adjustments. If you added 50 cents an hour to those employees making 15 oh one and above, there'd be an additional cost of benefits of 367,449 dollars. Now that's again assuming that we're talking about doing something of this nature in 26, 27 budget. They add an additional dollar rather than 50 cents for those making 15 oh one and above. If you're doing this uniformly for all employees, it would be gone to 734,899 dollars. So that's one option. The next page, next two pages are actually some tiered scenarios. And again, you'll notice that these are all contemplating starting in the year 26, 27, when the minimum wage actually gets to 15 dollars. There aren't any examples here that begin any mitigation of compression prior to that time. So again, these are just for illustration purposes. There's one scenario, option one. But let me first say that, let's assume that the employees most immediately impacted by wage compression in 26, 27, when it reaches 15 dollars are those that are in the pay ranges of 15 oh one to 18 dollars. This target group consists approximately 53 employees. Option one, and again, this is a Option one, and again, this is a, there are four options here, would be to add fifty cents per hour to those fifty-three employees with benefits, that option would cost seventy-one thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars, so that's for employees making between fifteen oh one and eighteen dollars an hour. Option two would be to add a dollar per hour for those employees with benefits, that cost would be a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Option three is a tiered approach. That would be to add one dollar per hour to the employees making fifteen oh ones and seventeen dollars an hour, that'd be thirty-two employees, that cost would be eighty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars, and they'd add fifty cents an hour, and you're gonna notice in this one and the next one, these are both tapering down, um, to the point that they're not as affecting as much those making more than eighteen dollars an hour. But the next one would be to add, uh, fifty cents an hour to those making between seventeen oh one and eighteen dollars, and that would cost twenty-eight thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars, a total of one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and twelve. And then the last option, option four, again, a tiered system, we're still dealing with pay range of fifteen oh one to eighteen, so this tiered system would contemplate an increase of a dollar per hour for employees making between fifteen oh one and sixteen dollars, that's fourteen employees, that total would be thirty-seven thousand, six twenty-three. Employees making between sixteen oh one and seventeen, eighteen employees, would receive seventy-five cents an hour, that cost would be thirty-six thousand, two seventy-nine. And then, finally, employees making between seventeen oh one and eighteen, uh, that group is twenty-one employees, receiving twenty-five cents an hour, that cost would be twenty-eight thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars, and the total of that tiered system would be one hundred, two thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. So, those are, just for conversation purposes. In conclusion, though, there are a few things that the commission needs to, uh, make a decision on at some point. Um, if the board decides that you're gonna do anything to mitigate the compression that results from the minimum wage mandate, um, when do you want to begin? One option would be waiting until the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget year, uh, option two would be to pick a date sometime prior to that. Second question, pay levels to be mitigated, all employees or just targeted group, um, or pay range? Number three, uh, again, mitigation adjustment options, uniform or tiered, you've got those options included in the package. So, again, this is for conversation purposes only, and for illustration purposes, and this is not being submitted as an all-inclusive list, there may be other ideas that commissioners have and that y'all want to discuss, but that will give you an idea, at the very least, of the cost impacts of, uh, the decisions, if you were to choose from any of these that have been presented to you today. If you have other ideas on this and you want to share them, then Mr. Gentry and I can go back and run numbers on those ideas as well, and bring those back, and you can incorporate those with what you have before you today.
Any discussion?
Any answers?
No, it's just for information, this is just so we can be studying on it, thinking about it before the budget gets here, so you've got some kind of idea of what we're looking at.
And these may or may not affect the budget at all this year, and again, I mean, like I said, if you waited until that fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage actually reaches your budget, that's still quite a ways out, that's twenty-six, twenty-seven budget year, unless you decide to do something for them.
Yeah, I don't want, sorry, I'm the same way, it's always nice, I want something, I may not be here then, and I don't want to leave that board that is here at the time with a kicking to gut of their budget, to have to throw ball at it one time, I mean, I would say, I wish you steer toward thinking, trying to get ahead of it a little bit at the time each year, so you don't, you know, get a kick in the gut in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and do it all, and, that's just my thoughts.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, this is a year to tackle, but definitely in the next, but you hear, need to have solid plan. You agree?
The way these tiered approaches were presented, you could do, you could implement those anytime, if you chose to do so, or you can come up with something entirely different. Um, in any event, you have some information that you, if commissioner was individually come up with some different ideas and want to share those with either me or Mr. Gentry, we can run the numbers on them, extend them on out, um, and then you'll have the information, we can discuss that as well.
Can I finish this up? Mr. Scott?
Just wanted to make a couple quick comments, we've had compression for years, we should address this many, many years ago, um, we've not, we're talking about it, but, I mean, it frustrates my guys and me as a, they're out there working, and a lot of the county employees do, too, but, you have, the thing you gotta keep in mind is that guy that starts at twelve bucks an hour, and guy that starts next year at eleven or twelve dollars an hour, he's already got years in, and trying to play catch-up, we gotta make sure we take care of those guys, because those are good people, because they go make money other places, and they're already getting trained, and they know what to do, and know what the expectations are, and, you know, that's our biggest asset, is our employees. Actually, we dump truck, or something else, but these are our employees, and when they use themselves. So, you know, you gotta think about the employees, we've forgotten about them a long time. We may thank them and stuff, but their bread, their gas costs more than ours does, we'd be, we'd, we'd get reverse for some buyers. So, just remember those guys that are making all the good, and us the good, so, I'll push it out.
Mr. Scott, I got to speak up for the girls, too, that's out there, the lifeguards we got there, off the line.
That's right. They're reminding that often, don't they?
They do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Mr. Chairman, I want to comment on something, I agree with everything Mr. Scott said, and I, I think he could confirm that, um, there was a period, probably been until about two thousand thirteen, I think, that prior five or six or seven years, the counties didn't get a raise at all. I mean, it was a long time, county employees could not get a raise. And then, I think what we did initially, the first year we tried, was we had some tiered system based on pay ranges, and then they also had a policy that said that after five years, an employee would get a five percent pay increase, and that policy got changed, go ahead and give them, and that was for a longevity increase. That policy got changed to one percent for years, so they're getting it, it's cumulative then over time. And then we finally got to where it's been fifty cents an hour plus that one percent for, I don't remember now, maybe four or five years. Um, so it's a whole lot different than it used to be, but I would agree, one of the worst things in the world that's happened to us is late. Besides the trend that Mr. Scott maybe was talking about, was what has happened the last couple of years, everyone, um, private sector and, and local government, it's terribly difficult dealing with that.
Well, I can just tell you, as a private business owner, I struggle with it every day, and it's awful what's happening right now. Inflation is eating your employees up, and it's hard to pay them any more money because you can't raise your prices quick enough to cover it, so you're getting squeezed as owner, and they're getting squeezed because prices is eating them up, and inflation, and it's, it's brutal right now, I'll just say it's brutal, I feel for them. Is there anybody else on this subject floor here? Mr. Gentry?
Um, when you were reading off the numbers, Mr. Harris, is that just the board employees, or was that included as a vote?
No, it, no, it wasn't just board employees, I mean, it was just information I provided, and, in fact, I'll just tell you, I still gotta have a conversation with the sheriff, because this issue with law enforcement, what the governor or legislators decided to do there, so I don't even have some of the information that we'll need before we actually have a conversation.
I just wanted to hear that our employees are included in it, if they're not, and if y'all do decide to look forward with anything, um, that you just go ahead and prepare me a letter, because anything that I put into the budget, I have to have, I actually have to follow y'all's direction, if y'all are giving raises, then I can get raises, if you're not, I can't, then I have to have something from you.
But you're still on the one percent, fifty cent, just like everybody else?
Oh, we're on the five percent, but this year I changed it to the one percent, so we've submitted the county, or a policy to, um, Tallahassee, and we're adopting that this year.
So it wasn't five percent?
Yeah, they, they never adopted, well, we adopted it back in, what, fourteen or fifteen, probably?
It's been a while.
Um, sheriff was already doing it, prior to the commission doing it, and then we adopted it, and then, um, the property office did about it. So, we're gonna go ahead and implement it this year. So we did, this year and then moving forward, it'll be whatever, whatever percentage of the raise y'all give, fifty cent, or whatever.
Well, what's your opinion on it? What, what, what are you trying to say?
Only one percent?
Well, now, on this wage, maybe, that we discussed.
I get paid with such property, I can't.
He's saying, I'll take some later, fish.
Well, well.
Don't call me a rock.
I, I think y'all got a, a tough job ahead of you, is, I don't think people fought it through when they, when they approved this fifteen dollars an hour, and I think you're seeing a lot of the repercussions of it right now, where kind of you're still buying some.
That's right.
And you see the other day.
And, you know, it's, it's standing on amendment, what they voted for, and they called taxes to go, and so, I mean, you're basically, of course you're basically, it's not gonna be going, but, that's what you have to do.
It's brutal in the private sector, I can tell you.
Brutal everywhere. That's all, I just wanted to make sure that, um, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Well, without your opinion, I don't know if we can move forward. Mr. Gentry, do this, uh...
Well, I'm not a creative, but my reason for, uh, coming up is to pretty much get going with what is already in state. Um, when I look at people that I have, who sometimes have casual wages, and the minimum wage applied to them, but I also have people who, um, have higher responsibilities, and so if compression is not dealt with, uh, sooner than later, then I'm gonna have people that have the level of responsibility being paid very close to what my minimum wage is, and I'd like that to just be considered in the conversations and decision.
Appreciate the point, this one, thank you. Chief Man?
I just, I kinda wanted to echo with Betty Ann Gray, when you look at, you know, I've been around the county a long time, but there've been times over the years, I guess we have that compression issue, because, not just in our department, or, but in all departments, starting pay may get raised, but they don't do anything to any of the current employees, you know, for that compression. And I know I deal with it on a, on a data basis, with, um, you know, when things like that happen, you have that long-term employee that has, you know, that's been here, and his level of pay is, is due to his loyalty to this one county, and his longevity that has come in, um, not, and, and they work really hard, and been loyal to the county, and, and like Greg was saying, you know, they, they, they've been trained in their position, they know the expectations, they're phenomenal employees, and then, with this situation that we're looking to deal with, and I know it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hard thing to come up, to come up with solutions to, but, I think, uh, if it's possible to do, uh, Mr. Harris gave several different, um, options that you guys can, and, and any of them will help, you know, better than doing nothing. But if you're looking across the board, adjustments in the departments, it takes into account that loyalty that our employees put into this county, and how, you know, because there's, there's a lot of people that could make more money somewhere, that they enjoy what they do, um, you know, we, we've always in the, you know, everyone always said government jobs are about benefits at the time, you know, it's not about, you know, your wage, because you make more wage, it's private sector, don't doubt. But, um, we have a lot of employees, loyal employees in this county, but, and like I said, I don't look forward, I don't give you guys at all the decisions you're gonna have to make on this, because finding a funding board is gonna be a hard, hard thing to do. But, um, like, like Greg said, our employees are our biggest asset, for sure, and, and we do everything we can to try to care for everybody.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Flum?
Yeah, I wanna say something just a little bit, I, uh, was, you know, my main topic was, you know, county employees, we'd be in, in our homes, in bed, except, we'd be out there working, and, uh, a lot of them, you know, left at homes, and, uh, I'd get up at six o'clock in the morning, I, 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 you hear?
Yes, sir.
I've got, um, six o'clock in the morning, and I'm, so, so these guys are in the country, and I roll that little roll, uh, it's a tough thing, it's, it's hard, uh, but, you know, when it comes to the finances, I've always been on their side, the county employees, I say we got some good county employees, I say good county employees, we got some good people that work for the county, and I think, and I always feel like that we should look out for our own. Now, I'll say this, too, I, I have twenty-four years in the county state, they didn't give me a pay raise for like eight years, you know, I never said anything, I got to that work, but, um, we did, uh, get a pay increase, and this month, we get another pay increase, which I won't be receiving in too long without me gone, but, we, um, I, 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 I would like to see, see us do a little better to keep our employees, because if, if another job comes, and I look at what they be doing, how they just, I say, man, if it was another company come in, and get all these employees, now we gotta start all over, and it make it hard for the county administrator, um, you know, trying to replace these people, and I know, you know, we bust our brains trying to figure out how it's gonna be done, I don't wanna give up my salary, say, okay, just split it all up, but some, some kind of way we, we, we gotta put our hearts and mind in it to try to keep these employees.
Mr. Harris, have you looked at any other counties, talked to any other county administrators to find out if they're addressing this issue, how they're addressing this?
I have not, and I've had some call me because they didn't know what to do. So, I would say this, though, if you take the numbers that are in here, you can pick a year, if you wanna do something soon, you've got some pretty good material here to gauge with on implementation, in a year that you wanna start doing something, um, you've got an idea of what it will cost to do it, and you just need to reconcile it with, again, the, the forecast on where we're gonna be with revenues. I will say this, too, this, this was unfortunate, um, but there was a time when the, um, Commissioner Fleming will remember this, along with, um, some of our department heads, who certainly remember this, but, uh, years ago, we used to go through our budget workshops, um, there were not any pay raises built into the budget the way they are today. We'd get to the end of everything else, and then say, well, okay, what's left? So, that changed a number of years ago, where we said, we're gonna go ahead and build these raises in at fifty cents an hour, and at one percent, um, and that's been a plus, it just has fallen short, we've beaten up with everything that's going, particularly the last couple of years, but, um, in any event, if the board wants to think about implementing something sooner, about keep pace with it, you've got a, pretty good information here that'll give you an idea of what it would cost to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Flum? I just thought that, I mean, I'm, for sooner than later, I'm addressing it, and it's tough, and we're going to just cut some money somewhere else, and we've, we've got some starting positions that are terribly low, I mean, we've, I've, just recently, I've known good people that come to apply, that would've been a good employee of the county, but the pay's so low, they can't make ends meet, they'd have to go somewhere else and try. So not only do we have what we already have here, we got...
So not only do we have what we already have here, we got, we got rates that need to be addressed as far as starting pays. I mean, it's, uh, so I don't, I don't know where we start cutting, but we have to, we're gonna have to start cutting. We're gonna have to get this addressed, and we're gonna have to get these folks where they can take care of their families. Because what we're dealing with right now, it's gonna get way uglier. There's people that's running a credit card debt and all kinds of other things, buying, buying six dollar gas. I mean, it, it's just unbelievable. So you're, you're gonna see it, it's bad now, it's gonna get brutal before it's bad.
I've already had two checks go from the mail system. People paying me like twelve thousand dollar worth of checks. They took out the mail system at some point, somewhere, changed addresses, changed names, and ran them through the bank, and the bank didn't work twice. So it's, it's, it's there.
It's, it's, I mean.
And I, I know it's bad, and I, I get it, you know, and, golly, it's, it's tough to deal with, and I'll tell you, it's really, especially if you're private, in enterprise. It's extremely hard to deal with. So I don't disagree that we need to do something sooner than later, because I know everybody's suffering, especially on the lower end of the pay scale. And we gotta cut somewhere else if we might have to, we just have to do it.
Well, that is it, Mr. Chairman, I mean, we got some options if we're, we wanna go with these tiers. And I, I think also the first step is let's decide which one we wanna go with, and then let's see that on paper and how that puts out. If we start implementing something, say, this year or next year. I wish we could do it this year. I'm very concerned, but I mean, I, I would, I just, I think.
I don't disagree, I, I know it's a problem and.
I mean, we got landfill issues and things, but I, I can put that off, that way, that.
Well, anyways, we got nothing.
Exactly. Exactly, I mean, it's, uh.
So I think this needs to be a holistic approach. I think you need to look at your starting salaries as well, not only this compression problem. Do you not start looking at your starting salary wages as well, what you're paying people?
Well, we need to take, figure out what we wanna do.
I would second what, what, what all of you guys are saying. Everyone, I mean, I don't wanna do it, I mean, the, the economy's stuck, things are getting tougher, I don't wanna put it off in, in the, the previous board with, or the next board for the problem. But also, I wanna help the people, our employees today, not next year or tomorrow.
That was true.
So we need to come on board doing something this year.
I think on the next meeting, we already said, especially, have the decision, what we wanna see, have that prepared for us by, by the time, by the, do what you do, as you kind of saw.
Yeah, that.
And, and let's pull the trigger on some, I mean, this is terrible. I mean, I agree with Mr. Scott and everyone else's, but just bed and everybody.
Is that part of the commissioners' day, are you right?
I think they left us out of that.
Ladies, 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 you're right, you're right.
Well, I know everybody's lunchtime, y'all, uh.
Listen, if you, if you have ideas, though, toward your next meeting, and you wanna share them with us, Mr. Gentry and I can take a look at those and go ahead and program them out where you've got numbers. But outside of that, this will give you a pretty good idea of what costs are. You know, one question is, when are you gonna implement this? Let me next year, that's great, that helps. But you'll have to decide if you're gonna do something across the board, if you're gonna do a targeted group, if you're gonna do a tiered system, um, how you wanna do that.
I know it's lunchtime, but if we're gonna look at this next meeting, which I think sooner we look at it, the better. I know it's lunchtime, but if we're gonna look at this next meeting, which I think sooner we look at it, the better. Shouldn't we go ahead and try to give him a couple of options to bring this information back with? I mean, I'm not saying we make a decision today, but if we can give him a pair of, say, can you prepare us some data of this scenario and some other that scenario? That way, come next meeting, we will be prepared to-
That would help.
To make a meeting.
Well, my meeting's got pretty much listed out here. You've got a few options here. You got all employees, you got tiered options, and you got the cost of what it's gonna cost to do it.
I, I, I'll jump out there, boss.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I, on the, and I'm on the back page, I'm looking at conclusion, I'm looking at these questions. Um, I think initially this year that we, that we do something sort of, question number one, I say that we look at it at this year. Question number two, um, starting out, I, I would lean toward option B, which is a targeted group, a pay range, which is obviously the, the lower scale on the pay scale, that's just my two cents this year to get something more on them. Um, because they're probably more affected heavily on the current economy and what's going on in the world today than, than the upper pay scale. And then number three, mitigation adjustment options. I'm kinda leaning toward uniform, only because to address the issue that Mr. Scott brought up about the seniority. If you do tiered, kinda feel like the guy starting out is gonna be more equal to the guy that may have already been here in three, four, five years. So I think that to, to help the seniority issue on the pay side, that you, it may be beneficial to morale if we go uniform versus tiered. That's just my two cents.
That's true. It's gonna be beneficial to morale if we go with all employees.
Yeah, that's the only thought that would-
I, I was just worried about the, jumping out there right now with, we got with some of the land acquisitions and on the budget side. That's the only thing I was thinking, trying to help the bottom here, right on the gate, but we don't, that's just my two cents. I don't disagree with you one bit, what you just said.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm on the position that even if the land acquisition has to change.
I wish you were my boss. I need one too.
So you're talking about a dollar an hour to every employee, a fifty cent an hour to every employee? What, what are you looking at here? Well, this is on top. This would be before the fifty cent, one percent. Fifty cent an hour to every employee is three hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. A dollar is seven hundred and thirty four dollars.
That's actually for those making above.
Yes, and you've got a list-
Above the fifteen oh one, so that isn't all employees. This wasn't set up for all employees.
Yep, you're correct.
If you look at page five, that three sixty seven-
Yes, sir.
Okay, that says fifty cents an hour, those employees making fifteen oh one above, it would be an additional, that's the additional cost for those. So if you're talking about doing something now and you're starting at the bottom, because we're not at fifteen dollars an hour, so you're at ten. So you first need to identify the targeted group. If you're gonna do a targeted group, I would say it's gonna have to start at ten, some, somewhere, or for next year it would be eleven, minimum wage is gonna be eleven. So if you first identify your targeted group, that's what you would do. If you're gonna do it across the board, that's different, but your minimum wage next year will be eleven. So that isn't the cost of all employees.
Oh.
That was only contemplating starting at, those already making fifteen dollars an hour at twenty six, twenty seven.
Well, I don't disagree that everybody needs some help, but I think what we really need to be concentrating on is these lower paid employees and bringing in somebody at fifteen and the guy that's already there to make it fifteen.
Everybody.
That's where you gotta start.
Well, if you got a guy that's making eighteen, that's been there twenty years.
Oh, I get that too, but I'm just saying, if you wanna try to do something quick, that's who needs to be helped the most. Then if you wanted to study over the rest of it, that's mine too. I'm hoping whatever you guys wanna do.
Or what about if we get information on both places?
Well, that's kinda what I would like to see is, I'll see how they see, they'll take, they'll vote.
Maybe they'll have some other next meeting, have a- If, if y'all can tell us what you want, we'll, we'll bring it back to you.
Across the board number and then also just the tiered number, we gotta find them out, things for example.
Well, my, my, I mean, how many people have we got making ten dollars an hour? How many people we got making twelve dollars an hour?
That would be helpful, yeah.
I mean, I'd like to know, where's everybody at? I don't even know where everybody's at.
We can get that for you. But as far as your overall question, you know, the one of across the board or a tiered system is what you're gonna come back to ultimately.
But I'm saying- But I'm, I'm just looking at what, how many people we got at ten dollars an hour? What's it gonna take to get them to whatever, twelve, fifteen, thirteen dollars an hour, fifteen dollars an hour maybe? I don't know. How many people have you got at thirteen dollars an hour and gets fifteen dollars an hour on up? I mean, what's that all looking like?
We, we can get you all the numbers on all those salaries right now.
And we really, I, I'm speaking myself, I'm like, I almost need to see that. But that's really, will tell us the true numbers.
Well, I mean, I just-
Everybody's getting a one percent, fifty cent an hour pay rate. So the, so this is gonna be an addition to that. So for me to make that decision, as far as I'm concerned, I need to know what people are making and how many of them is there. Because at some point, I, I, it's like me and my business, I don't take a pay raise. I try to give it to my employees, because I know I'll make plenty of money and I'm gonna be all right. So at some point there, you gotta help lower in, somebody that's making whatever, sixty, seventy, a hundred thousand dollars a year, you're just gonna be on your own.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I think that, that this inflation's kicking everybody's butt, but the guy, the guy or gal, the person that brings home thirty five, thirty five thousand dollars a year, thirty thousand dollars a year on a salary, whether it's by the hour or salary, annual salary, this inflation's kicking him a heck of a lot harder than the guy that's bringing home seventy five, or the girl that's bringing home seventy five thousand.
Why don't we set a wage to look at from a certain point back, let's have forty five-
That's what I would recommend. I mean, for example, you wanna look at everybody that's under eighteen dollars an hour or seventeen dollars an hour, whatever it happens to be. You, you pick it, we can run all those numbers and get it to you.
That's what I'd like to see, but that's just my two cents.
Let's look at everybody from twenty dollars an hour down.
That's good. All right.
That'll be all departments, right, Mr. Parrish?
And constitutional officers.
Yeah.
Um, and then I still, like I said, I need to talk to the sheriff and we need to get a, a grip on what's going on with this mandate on law enforcement, first responders and that pay issue there.
Or the trade, like it, and how that affect the county and-
We need, we need to know how that's gonna affect the budget.
Yeah.
Overall.
Yep. Because I know he handed me his budget yesterday and I think theirs is going to forty five thousand dollars a year, starting back.
Yeah, a little assistance from-
With the assistance from the state. But at some point, whereas the state says, I ain't paying that no more.
Well, that's typically what they do, they start and then stop.
That's a recurring expense, but maybe no recurring funds could match it.
That's right.
And you don't know what that's gonna make, impact on it.
Yeah.
Well, it's six hundred thousand dollars. Yes, sir.
That will tend to, but you know, the one they're gonna stop.
You don't know when they're gonna do that. So I mean, you gotta kinda be prepared for when they do do it, because you know it's a little-
I guess I would leave y'all general on this though, just be prepared. This is gonna be a great big number when these papers come back and there's gonna be tips on, in these workshops, it's gonna be tough as well. And it's just, it's costs doing business and doing a lot of things, I'm gonna figure it out, how to get there, I mean, it's a-
There's only a certain amount of money and you have to make it work.
So if you wanna do it, you don't do it now.
Whatever, did you have something?
I just, are y'all, are y'all just going to whatever lettering, do you say they're ten dollars an hour? Or do you just take them to eleven this year? Or y'all kinda go on with the fifteen?
I don't know without looking at what.
Right, right now, what has to be built into the budget, it has to go up to eleven for next year. That's just, that's just meeting the, the minimum.
The reason I was asking that is, because if you're just going to eleven, this is gonna be recurring every year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. This is the next four year plan or?
It goes up a dollar a year. Those that are in that minimum wage category go up a dollar a year until they reach fifteen.
Actually, when y'all are looking at eleven or you're looking at fifteen, I don't know.
No, it's, it'll, each year continue to rise.
There is.
It's a complicated question. Look.
I need my-
Name and address, please.
Moses Lucker, one four five eight one hundred second path, my old. Uh, I love y'all looking at the lower ways, I, I actually had that twenty right in my ears, I'm glad y'all started there. Those that are above that, it's like y'all, I, I repeat with y'all, I'm believing y'all. I, I've got a few things, I'm making real quick, none of us look like we've been started at this, we've missed a little much, so I ain't feel too bad about that. But, uh, uh, I wanna compliment at least two of the board members. It's very obvious to those out, some of us out there, that the, uh, y'all are doing more than due diligence. Uh, y'all are educating yourselves and, and serving this county well. And I, I personally appreciate, and I know many of us that are out there and beyond do appreciate that. This, Ms. Green, when she come in and she, she, she mentioned, and, and I know not necessarily brand new, but, uh, she mentioned the cooperative relationships that increases our chance of getting these grants that we're desperately need, that will defer some of these costs we're talking about. Uh, I, I personally, I just want to throw this out here, I think that one twenty nine fire station thing is a fiasco. I think it's an unnecessary expense. It's solved, but it's gonna be probably, what I first heard was a million, then I'm hearing two million. Nowadays, this post pandemic mess, three million, unnecessary, do ball. From what I hear, I've already clocked it's, it's three and a half minutes without a license, sirens to get from there to the site of the youth station. Uh, we got that property already, we've done spent money on it. I know it's been approved for the administrator to, uh, set that all up, but that could shift, all right? And, and it doesn't have, I don't see the need for that expense today. If, if, uh, there's two chiefs and I, I don't, I don't wanna injure anybody's feelings, but I heard discussion through all this, where nobody loses their job, all right? If there's two hard heads, that's gonna cost the county upwards of maybe three million bucks just because somebody don't wanna give a little bit? Well, I think that needs to be addressed by y'all, you know? If it could be worked out, I know it's a whole big can of worms, I know, I realize it is, but so what? That three million bucks, if it is that, could be used for what y'all discussing right now. And, and I, I just, anyway, I think y'all know fully where I'm at with that and I probably don't need to say anymore about that. But, uh, there, uh, it's, we need to hire that lady that, that, uh, that lady was up there, we just need to hire her. Give, give her twenty percent of what she's making, give her a contract, and, and problem probably solved, you know, as far as grant writing. But on that note, I believe, uh, I'm, I'm rough, I'm ignorant a lot of stuff, but I think, uh, we're gambling, or we just, we just outlawed some gambling in this county. I think it'd be foolish from my understanding to go and hire a firm like that and gamble maybe sixty grand on a, a, a six million dollar, uh, possible grant and, and gamble that sixty thousand, that, that's one, you know, that's a, you know, two and a half or two salaries, uh, we're talking about. I think we, money would much be better spent to hire an experienced, competent, uh, grant writer to assist Shannon and, uh, create a situation where we're not gonna have, where the AOR, the authorized person could fail us and, and potentially cost us thirty three million dollars, all right? That thirty three million dollars that we come with, and I, uh, wouldn't able to be here, but I heard the, what appeared to me to be excuses for on January ninth, uh, meeting, for us not getting that and we didn't have a chance anyway. No, I disagree. Uh, there's a lot of publications that says we were one of the biggest, if not the biggest potential person to receive that grant money. I know, um, that supposedly nobody got it in Florida, but they were definitely looking at us and, and we didn't comply. Uh, deadlines were, uh, made, this, this county, the, the authorized person was notified and failed even two days prior to, uh, uh, the deadline was notified, failed to respond until well after, and, uh, we lost any, any choice of that. If we had an assistant for Shannon, who, there was some sort of, uh, preventative from that ever happening again, uh, I think that salary would be, uh, earned through the grant money we'd received. So that's probably enough on that. The, uh, one thing I did wanna, I, I don't know how this firm works, but do they have a, a history, like return on investment, the ROI of their experiences on, on the people they represent? Uh, do they have an average of what they were spending before compared to what they're spending now? What their grant money coming in before compared to what now? They should, this company should be able to provide that, I would think. Um, the, uh, sorry. Uh, Pops and, uh, the, Mr. Locklear here, I believe they clarified that we don't need a, uh, land. It, it made it pretty clear to me, being in an audience, plus what I researched, I spoke, I can't remember the director's name over in Nacila. I spoke to him personally. He, I, I'm leaning towards Pop with a lot of, uh, of writings from Mr. Prabat, our attorney, to prevent him from selling the waste management down the road, getting us back in the same spot. I think that should be prevented regardless of what Mr. Pop or Pops' business does with their business. They can't sell our business, you know, to them. And, and whatever that is, you know, just to prevent us from getting back there. But I know for, it was only over the phone, I didn't go out there, some of y'all did. Uh, but the Nacila, uh, manager over in Greenville, he lives in our county. He has interest in us going over there personally, his family's here, he wants us over there. So that is absolutely happening, and it was great Satan's way back then, I could only imagine that still exists. Those two folks right there, uh, Waste Pro, uh, um, uh, Waste Management, those, those people helped us get where we are. I, I would hope y'all would dare go in that direction, you know, so, um, and then, I'm done.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Flur. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Grant?
I'll make it quick, but I'm on the-
Thank you. Name and address, please, sir.
Ryan Hannaford, one one eight eight three ninety third road, Bravo. Um, I just wanted to make a comment, really great meeting this morning. I, I think you guys accomplished a lot, there's a lot on your plate, and it's gonna take a whole lot more to do these type of situations to do that. Uh, the only negative comment I have today is being in the audience and not having what you have in front of you makes it really difficult to figure out what's really going on. Normally it's done electronically, but we'd really like to see that with these workshops too. There are a lot of times I'm sitting there going, why aren't they really talking about it? Because I don't have it in front of me. And we do that on every meeting, I don't know why we didn't do it today. I remember it was a criticism, but that was it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Anyone else wish to speak? Name and address, please.
Yeah, after, Doug Libby, uh, one nine four three two one sixty first court. Uh, I'm a, uh, resident close to Springs and I did, threw emails and questions to all. And I appreciate what's going on. Uh, quick act, I'm the sheriff, I had a conversation with him. And, uh, appreciate how, how we can get there. And it's an attractive nuisance that we created, it's beneficial to the residents, but it became a big problem over the years. I've been popular here for three, seven years. One of the reasons that I moved to the area was Springs, we're like the Bay of Southwest, we're trying. Uh, so again, I thank you for, you know, the quick action, the sheriff and everyone's team. Uh, I'm retired law enforcement and I've dealt with very similar actions. I, I, I worked traffic out of the traffic, I, I voted grant actually, it's kind of a traffic department. I started up in, you know, Fig, in Flushing County, I worked better in public, I worked traffic. And I've worked with situations with parks and beaches. And, uh, it all starts with having the ordinances and laws there that the sheriff can enforce. And that's where, you know, few people have to, uh, start without something for the sheriffs to work with. It takes, uh, presence of, and, uh, you know, it's can't be sporadic. I think it has to be addressed, like we talked, you all talked about earlier. Uh, and a good idea is fees, we have to limit it. Uh, we, I, I live within a mile of there, been a lot and see the problems. Boat ramp's a big problem. You have people using the boat ramp for a beach, people can't even launch their boats there, you know? So it, it takes the ordinances to cover everything at the park and, uh, a little, again, I also worked a couple of years under cover of poties. And it takes people that aren't in the uniform standard. Nobody's gonna blast your uniform and drink their beer with a, a, a policeman in a uniform there, it just doesn't happen. Uh, you, you're just deferring it, so, you know, anyways. Uh, so, hopefully the sheriff can, you know, with a ranger or someone who not necessarily, you know, uniformed or whatever, all types, some take a look over there, be able to come up with people and, and maybe get anything, and that. Uh, anyways, the problem that stems from that is the road problem there. One, uh, ninety eight cars. It's, it's a dust cloud, uh, we have all our gravel roads, of course, are problems. But people come out with their special, you know, a date or drinking or partying or whatever, these parties. Every time the road's degraded, and you can drive through there a couple hours later, it's tore up, coming around, I feel like it's, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I wish it was fun to paint going down to the spring, that would cure a lot of the problems here. But it's not just a problem, it's for all the local residents, it's the problem being created by the spring again. So, uh, I'm just bothering people, I think. Just, again, appreciate anything you can do, anything I can do, I, I'm a local and I'm, I'm, I'll help on it if I can.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Libby, thanks for coming. I did get your email, I haven't responded yet, but you did start some conversations, as you heard today, about, you know, some remedies. So I appreciate you, uh, being engaged.
Yeah, and, and like I said, the sheriff's been very good in their response and everything. And I know, uh, just to bring up, I, somebody, uh, brought my attention really to the Facebook thing that the sheriff put on Facebook. I could not believe the comments, the number of people that responded to that Facebook thanking the sheriff for addressing the issue and promising to be prepared. So, you know, I, I, I didn't want to just be the squeaky wheel, you know, all my neighbors complain, but nobody ever brings us attention, so, uh, they're, you know, yeah, you know, they need that. So anyways, I, I'm glad to see that.
Thank you.
When you go out there all this quick, you will, like-
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Great, we're done.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. So address what Mr. Hannaford said, I mean, that's how big it is, I get it, but we're at the city hall, that's the first city council meeting I've been to in a long, long time. And staff may hate me for making this suggestion or asking this question, but they have that screen, you know, that TV screen. But could we, i- is it possible, Manny's probably gonna really kill me, for someone to scan this in and we just scroll through it?
What we can do is, we'll scan this in and-
Now, I was gonna say, just make this many copies and pass them out, man, that'd be very possible.
We can scan this in and get it on, uh, we'll go ahead and send it out now even, where-
I'm talking about like, like hypothetically, have we scanned this in? Could we put it like-
On the screen?
On the screen and then somebody kinda scrolls through and say, here's where, uh, here's where, uh, here's where-
There you go, did you?
That, that would happen.
Man, I'd be worried, you know?
We, we can, we can do it.
We can take, folks, look and see how they're doing it and-
Well, they're supposed to be redoing all this, aren't they, here pretty quick, or hopefully?
They're getting to it, yes.
But what you're asking is, a little bit different, we, see if we can get an answer to that.
I mean, maybe not all of it, but maybe the nuts and the bolts, but-
Well, if it gets emailed out to us, if it's just a way of plugging, plugging all of the email.
That's what it looked like on the city scene, because I was there last night too, and it looked like they just had a copy of the agenda with, you know, some of the backup. And we just scrolled through it, as we knew, which is fine with me. I'm not trying to hide anything, I promise you.
Electronic works, but that's nice too.
Yeah, but sometimes it comes to the meeting, like Mr. Libby, he may not get the, he may not be on the electronic layer, so in the event he shows up and doesn't have anything, because he didn't get the email, and then we're still scrolling through it on the board.
Mr. Hannaford said hi.
I can't believe that happened to you.
You don't get a phone call, I don't know. Um, with that being said, is there any other business? If not, do I have a question?
Absolutely.
Much like Mr. Hill, second by Mr. Landau on paper, I, all folks, same side.